Secretary, will you please call the role? Here. We have six members present, so we have a quorum. I'm now going to open up the public comment period. I have several public comment forums. We do ask that if you do speak, fill one of these out, and you're welcome to come and speak up here. I'm going to go in no particular order. First one I have is Larry Simone.
Testing, testing, you hear me? Really? I can't hear myself. Good morning. My name is Larry Simone. I live at 126 Claude Dell Drive in Kyle. Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff, thank you for allowing us to speak this morning. I'm coming to you on behalf of the seniors I represent as the president of the Kyle Area Senior Zone. I've been here a few times on some planning, on some other meetings, and I gave you our overall profile, what we're trying to do as seniors. But I just wanted to ask you today at this forum, if you can consider, in your budget planning for this year and the out years, what we need for our senior center. As you know, we've been in the Krug Building for 10 years. It's been fantastic. We thank you for the city's support, for the free electricity, air conditioning, but we've outgrown it. One thing we learned, just when CAS came back to order this month, we saw many new seniors coming in from the city. And I always get the calls and they'll say, hey, I'm coming here, where's your senior center? And we show them the old ballroom over there, and they're pretty much amazed. They're saying, my gosh, this is a modern city. Where's the modern facility? Well, it's not there yet. Our staff's been out for three years looking at facilities. We're passing a lot of our information to the city and trying to weave our information with the city. This week alone, this month alone, we had to put signs on our door to say, can't take any more people into the building because of capacity. And that's a good, bad thing, I guess. You know, trying to get people in and just can't accommodate them all. So the need is growing in Kyle. We know the city is modernizing big time. You can't forget us seniors. We're good old people. We love to be happy and work and volunteer and vote, but we especially need our seniors together. Had a lady come in crying to me. She says, my husband just died. I need a place just to go, just to be as a senior. I'm healthy, but I just want to be in community with people. And we brought her in and made her feel like a million bucks. But it was, it's a challenge to get everybody's attention. We have several people here today who are going to speak on specific topics, particularly one gentleman worked the census in Kyle, and he's going to tell a story about what he saw as seniors. We know we're happy standing up and alive today doing our things as seniors, but there's several that cannot. The calls I get asking for help, we need to be a beacon for our seniors. Please don't write us off. We're healthy, we're good. We want a new facility. We need it bad. Talked to this mayor, excuse me, Scott, and you know, there's property available for us, parkland. Right now, we're putting a package together. We want to go to the county and say, county, you got some big pockets, deep pockets? How about helping us and join efforts with our city, with our organization, and build us a city, senior center? The county has five major cities. None of them have senior centers. We're saying, Hayes, perhaps you can come to Kyle, build it, own it, operate it, and put the name Hayes County Senior Center, whatever. Finally, I'd like to just say, as we grow with you, we'd like our Parks Department to be with us as far as helping us operate today what we got so we can transition someday to the senior centers running, run by a city. We've seen senior centers that were run privately. We've seen senior centers that started at $2 million, and we went to Round Rock, which is the benchmark in Texas, I think, of $34 million facility. And one thing the guys always told us as we went around to these 17 centers, you build it and they will come. As these parents are arriving because their kids live in this city or work in Tesla or wherever, the parents of these seniors, the senior parents are saying, what do you got for us? And I think if you could put this in your budget to one day, you know, consider some funding for us, I think it paid great dividends for the city. Thank you very much.
Next up, Betty J. Conley.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor Pro Tem and city council members and city staff. My name is Betty Conley, and I live at 87 Eagle Creek Drive here in Kyle, Texas. I'm here to talk to you about the growing needs of seniors in Kyle. My husband and I have worked with seniors for over 16 years. And as seniors ourselves, we know and have learned firsthand over the years the true needs for seniors. Seniors are looking for and in need multiple resources to help them stay active, live independently, and continue to thrive. During our years living in senior retirement communities and working there, we've been able to reach out to the seniors for their needs by advocating for their general health and welfare. One example of that outreach has been bringing in professionals to meet the seniors' needs. We joined CAS because it aligns with our belief in helping the senior community. But CAS is not able to serve all seniors in Kyle without an increase in the programs we offer now, as well as increase of space to offer those programs. An increase in programs for seniors will help more seniors get their social, physical, mental, spiritual mindfulness needs met. In addition, CAS could provide other programs such as finance, technology, and adult education. Seniors should need to know they're needed and not alone. We have seen too many seniors who are isolated and depressed. We have seen too many on a fixed income and sometimes only have one meal a day. This is not how our golden years should be spent. CAS is working hard to minister to all seniors in Kyle and surrounding areas for their social health and general welfare, but we cannot do this alone. CAS has already outgrown the space at the Krug Building, restricting us from our mission to reach as many seniors as we can. Currently, the facility is inadequate due to limitations in overall space, undersized kitchen, limited parking, lack of ADA access to upstairs offices and conference rooms, and scheduling restrictions. We currently cannot meet the demands of our seniors in this space, and we're unable to expand programs or new programs. We have turned to seniors await events and luncheons because we simply did not have room for them. Along with the rest of Kyle, the senior population has exploded. Our vision today is for a new and larger senior center to enrich and empower Kyle's seniors as well as Kyle's community. We must have the help from both the city and the county in order to create a safe and friendly place, a one-stop-go-to resource. I appeal to you today with my heart for this new senior center, a center that will allow CAS to expand its mission by providing more resources, services, programs, activities to enhance the quality of life for all seniors as well as those in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Kathy Gilson.
Good morning, council and committee members. I'm Kathy Gilson. I'm president of Kyle Quilters. I live here in Kyle, in Plum Creek. And we are a part of the CAS. We are part of the senior zone. And I want to thank you for the 10 years that we have used the Krug Building. And like you said, you've given it to us lovingly. The center is nice, but we have outgrown it. We need more space. We need more space to have tables that are not stacked upside down. So we have to go in and remove them. And what that happens is, we have less tables to use. We cannot get them down. More space in the kitchen. Three is definitely a crowd. More space so we do not get overbooked and ask to please leave the building for the renters. More space for spontaneity. We have no place to meet. We can't just say, hey, we need to have a meeting, and so now we have to figure out where to have it. We need more space for a larger quilt show. And I want to, I don't know if y'all know this or not, but the Parks and Recreation Committee came to us years ago and said, please, can you have a quilt show annually? So we, the same day as the big celebration. So we've been doing that. But we don't have enough storage. All of our equipment from our quilt show is upstairs. And we either have to beg high school students to come help us or we have a fire bucket line down to try to get all of them down. And then, of course, they have to go back upstairs. And we would really appreciate your consideration for helping us to have a bigger facility. Thank you.
Domingo Castilla.
My name is Domingo Castilla, and I live at 295 Painted Creek Way here in Kyle, Texas. I was born and raised here in Kyle. Prior to moving to San Marcos, I graduated from San Marcos High School. Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to present my point of view in supporting the members of the Kyle Area Senior Zone. During my 60-year lived absence from this area, I've had the opportunity to complete my military obligation to my country, completed a successful career with Verizon Corporation, and spent 20 years as a college professor for the Dallas and Tarrant County College Schools Districts. Upon retirement, I returned to Kyle due to my fondest memories of a city that cared for its citizens. I hope this still holds true. Corporations and city governments have an obligation to serve its citizens and to maintain a positive image to the public that it serves. This public image is maintained and reinforced by volunteering the use of its assets and inclusive financial support to various nonprofit organizations. This process is known in corporate world as social responsibility. The purpose of social responsibility is to give back to the community and to provide positive social values. May I suggest that you take advantage of this call and opportunity to meet and exceed your social responsibilities by providing us with the financial support to build the facility for the good of all the citizens of Hayes County? The area here in Hayes County has been identified by various economic publications as one of the fastest-growing areas in the United States. Some of the factors that contribute to the business incorporated movement to this area and other areas are the, are as follows: financial requirements, educational institutions, business growth potential, product distribution expectations, and especially employee social and health benefits. I believe if you build this facility, you can meet a lot of these criteria. I know when I used to live in Santa Monica, California, what used to be GT, which is now called Verizon, we decided to relocate to the Dallas area. And this was the main factors that we used during our diligence process to decide to relocate to Dallas. As you know, other counties are also campaigning for these small businesses and future corporations. I believe that if you build this facility, you can use this as a promotional tool. Lastly, a week from today, we all are going to be celebrating the birth of our nation with friends and friends. May I urge you not to forget the military veterans of our organization that have delayed their educational and business goals in order to serve our country so that all of us can continue to enjoy the privileges that we cherish. Thank you.
Edwin Nguyen.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff. My name is Edwin Nguyen. I live at 109 Perdon Ellis Drive in Silverado. Prior to that, I lived for 42 years at 704 Blanco. I've been around a while. I'm in a minority, I know, because I still have a mask. When you're 92 years old and you walk down the street, you carry as many guns as you can, loaded. So I have a mask. And please excuse it if you feel offensive to this. I look around and I see so many staff members that I've worked with throughout the years, and I appreciate all of you, especially James, who's stayed here for so long and saw us grow. I moved here in 1973. In 1979, I was elected to the city council. I served two terms as council member, two terms following that as the mayor of Kyle. Back then, our biggest workshop problem was, well, are we going to be able to sell enough water to pay for our two maintenance people and the two office staff? This was our budget. We still burn trash back off out on the end of Center Street. The governor would call me every once in a while and remind me, Ed, your trash, your dump ground is on fire. That's the only way we had a way of getting away with it. Yeah, it's a violation, but you know, you stretch where you can and go from there. But city council and staff, I'm here to speak to you for your future, especially those of you on the council. I think that you are solid citizens. You're going to be here till you get to be 92 years old. At that time, I know that you would appreciate having a facility for your seniors together. Larry and I are probably gone a long time from now, after, before then, but I'm here to plead for you. We would like to build for you and your future as senior citizens, a place that you can really call home. We appreciate everything that you've done with the old city hall. And I still remember it as the old city hall because as mayor, my office was up in the upper stairs in the storage room where it is now. And the city council met up there. But we appreciate what you've done. I was not a chartered member of CAS. CAS was formed in 2006. I got to be a member in 2007 because in 2006, I was still out in the state having a big time and enjoying my retirement. But council, would you please consider every way that you can in stretching this budget to cover your future as well as ours in helping us to develop what Larry and his board of directors have presented, to you over and over, that we would like to take that property that you have willingly allowed us to build on. We're hoping that the staff is, the board of directors is working very diligently in developing those funds that we can afford to build that kind of building. But please, as you, as you consider your budget today, consider yourself in the future, okay? We want to prepare a good place for you so that you'll be happy and that there will be a wide variety of programs for you as a senior citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Nguyen. Charlotte Clayton.
Good morning, everybody. Appreciate your time in listening to CAS members. We, I live in Steeplechase subdivision, by the way, and joined in 2009 when I moved to Kyle to live with my daughter. And Kyle has been a blessing in my life. It's the only place where I've been able to meet people and make friends. The neighborhood that we live in was mostly younger people who went to work. So I didn't really see anybody to make friends with except for one who last year moved to Missouri. So CAS is the place where I, as a member, come to be around people. And I've discovered that's important because during the pandemic, you didn't see anybody, and it made a big difference. I noticed when I came back that a younger group has come in. So consider this, like Ed said, you're heading there, and you would want to live and work in a community that provides a wonderful senior citizen, senior activity place for their citizens. And the plans, I don't know if you've seen them, are excellent because they provide different rooms for different activities held at the same time. We don't have that right now. So I enjoyed my time joining a choir, which became defunct, but we're friends. So we still meet once a month just to see what's going on in our lives. And there's other activities that are going to be available when you consider us in your budget. Thank you.
Stephen Butler.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Butler. Been working with the CAS people for two and a half years now. I was the architect. I'm also a member of CAS, a senior citizen myself, 67 years old, and plan on being above the grass a little longer. We have put together the plan. Some of you have already seen it, 33,000 square feet and amphitheater and several programs that we would like to enjoy as a group longer. I've recently touched, reached out to a contractor. And if you want to put into your budget a $10,500,000 today price, that's what it will run. So it will continue to increase and would like to see you incorporate that in your budgets if you can. But I won't drag on any longer. You've seen the plans. I'm here for questions, to answer questions about the facility as you all come up with them. Thank you for your time and your responsibilities here.
Mary Jane Voskas.
Good morning. My name is Mary Jane Voskas, and I'm now a citizen of Hayes County. I've lived in Austin, Texas, all of my life. And, but guess what? I'm a baby boomer. How many baby boomers do we have here? And you know what? I didn't ever get to this age, but we do. Let me tell you. We have visited some of the senior citizens around the state of Texas. And boy, I was blown as to what they have in their city. And I came to Hayes and I thought, is this it? Is this all we have here? Could we negotiate with the city to do something better than what we've got? How old is that building that we're in now? Does anybody know? I don't know. Anybody with the city council know? 1912. Is anybody born 1912? I don't think so. I think we need to look at this as something that senior citizens and the citizens that are baby boomers at this time have the need to go to. As you get older and you retire, what is there to do? Sit down and watch television every day? Citizens and seniors nowadays want to stay active. They work out, they do line dancing, they quilt. They have a lot of opportunities if they were to given a place to enjoy and have more seniors and more baby boomers that are coming into Hayes County to participate on a daily basis. Right now, the calendar is full. And I tell Larry, how much fuller is this going to get? And Larry's gone every day. I see him once a day. I mean, once a week, if I'm lucky. And it takes a lot of time for these volunteers. They're not being paid. This is all volunteer work. And this is amazing for these guys to have held up so many years volunteering with no pay whatsoever. That's why we're asking the city council to look at the future, the future for us, for you, and for the city of Kyle, and know that the county and the city can come together and make this happen. And we are going to support this place for as long as we can. Thank you so much for your time.
Next is Robert Ferguson.
Mayor Pro Tem, city council, and overworked city staff. I've been in your shoes. Okay. My name is Robert Ferguson. I live at 101 Brittany Loop, Kyle. We've been here since 2015. We came here because our son was in South Austin, a disabled veteran. A perspective from a census taker. Sometimes you wouldn't believe what's out there. I spent 30 to 50 hours a week from July 26 through September 21, 2020, canvassing for the census in Kyle, Kyle ETJ, and Hayes County. I visited an average of 40 residences a day, six to seven days a week. That's approximately 2,000 residences. And I visited some of those residences multiple times because people weren't home and left notes. The visits are categorized below. Approximately 40% of the residents would not answer the door for fears of COVID. Okay? 10% were not home after repeated trips to the residences. 20% had moved here after April 1st. The reference date to be included in the census for this area, which gives you the funding from the federal government, by the way. 30% invited me in, answered questions, and expressed opinions. Most were positive, some were negative. Okay? The positive group tended to be more senior than the negative group. The negative group were the young people working their tushes off, trying to survive, depending upon their parents that were coming into the area to take care of their children because it took two people to provide the income to survive in this area. I observed many senior citizens in poor or substandard housing, caring for multiple children, and they were worn out supporting their children and grandchildren. They had nothing to support them. A lot of the comments that were positive were, well, it's a good community, we love it here, we have a good government. Okay, basically, some of them said that. Concerns were something like, I can't get around. There's no transportation. I can't get to the city. There's no bus services. There's no senior support groups. Like you have AEC up in Austin. You have those big groups in Austin that help seniors. They come down here periodically. They come down here periodically to help, but we don't have anything here. The younger population tended to be both working and indicated that their parents may be moving here to help them with family raising. I found it very interesting doing the census. Census sometimes had addresses where the plumbing was just coming out of the ground. Okay, so no houses yet. So you had to go back and forth and say, I was there, I wasn't there, you know? There were houses that I, plumbing sites that I'd visit, and two weeks later, I'd go back, and there was a house there, and it was already sold. More toward Bunting Creek in that area, a lot of, a lot of building. The City Council and county management have a huge task with finances provided. And if we could do a census again and get it right, instead of waiting two months, only getting two months out of the year, you'd probably get a lot more money out of the federal government. Texas is increasing in population by millions a year. And Hayes County and Kyle, they're growing. I know from what I've seen from census data is that at a minimum of 16.5% are senior citizens, well over 65. That's the low end. The high end is around 25%, if we really had a good statistical analysis. With this area growing, I submit that the underserved senior population needs to be supported to improve family life and continuity of the electorate. I mean, guys, we pay the bills. Okay? The last budget election for the county was something was the Hays CISD 1, $49.5 million so they could sit on their tushes in an office altogether. They got buildings where they're at right now. And you've got senior citizens that don't have anything. $10.5 million is chump change compared to what we should be getting for senior citizens because all of you are going to be senior citizens one day, if not now, if you're over 50. Please tap the resources of your senior population by providing funding and land for the senior center run by the city government. Run by the city government, you guys have more skills and more vigor. I mean, we're getting old, guys. You build it, they will come, and our community will grow. If you don't build it, you're just opening yourselves up to more problems. So if I can relate one situation, I was in the very well-to-do portion of the community, Waterleaf. I went into the house because the woman invited me in. I mean, she was about 70 years old. I walked in, and a beautiful house on the outside. Inside was totally disarray. I mean, dishes piled two feet above the kitchen. I mean, she had nothing. Nobody visited her or did anything. There were no activities that she could become a part of. She had lost her husband a couple of years earlier. She had two little dogs scurrying on the floor, and that was it. And she was sitting there for, in front of a TV. Okay? I sat with her for a half an hour, we talked. And then I referred her to the church because there's nothing else I could find to refer her to. We have so many people like that. In another situation, I ran into, I went into a house, or a trailer, as you might call it, and three or four kids running around. But the woman barely had any food in the house. I mean, this, the object of government is to provide for the people that they are supported by. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate everything you've done, and we know that you know that there's a problem. And we know that someday, the government, federal government's going to get you the money you need. Because as I remember, if you're over 50,000 population, your finances get greatly expanded. And supposedly 52,000, guys, I'm telling you, Kyle doesn't have 52,000. They got 60,000, and it's going to be 70,000 within another year. It's growing so fast. It's unbelievable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Don Crowe.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council of Kyle. You all deserve a lot of credit and a lot of kudos for what you have done so far for the seniors of this city. We hope that you can continue on supporting us, and you've already shown that desire by furnishing a piece of property for us to go ahead and put a new senior center on there, which is badly needed because people are moving out of the inner cities. People are growing older and looking for a place like Kyle. My wife and I came from another state, and we came because of our children. Were transferred here for their employment. And so we made many, many trips out to this area. And when we came, they always took us around to various towns, north and south. And we looked, I don't know how many little towns and cities because my wife and I were grown up, grew up in a small town. And we thought about it, and we thought about it, and we were getting up in age. Not as old as Ed, but almost. But anyway, we decided that we were going to move to Kyle. Now, why did we pick Kyle? Because from the time we came and moved here, the people that we met were like Ed and you folks. Kind, considerate, welcoming us. So my wife and I decided, hey, we're going to move to Kyle, and that's what we did. Out of all of these various towns that we went to, we picked Kyle. And that reason was you folks and people like Ed, the way you've treated us and greeted us. Now, my wife and I have always tried to keep ourselves active. And we really fully believe that as we age, we need to keep ourselves active. Not some outlandish thing, but keep your mind mentally and physically, keep yourself capable. Because once you isolate yourself, you be isolation, you tend to forget and lose your mental abilities and your physical abilities. So we said to ourselves, we're going to keep ourselves active and busy. And this gentleman over here, I don't know, I was kidding him about his gray hair and his age, he's 92. And he always told me, at least I got hair. Well, Ed and I are pretty close in age. He's 92, I'm 91. My wife is 90. And we decided a long time ago that we weren't going to let ourselves fall into the trap that we see so many seniors fall into. They don't have any activities, and as a result, they start losing their ability to think and their memory, eventually go into dementia and Alzheimer's. So we decided that we moved to Kyle in, what was it, 2005 or 2006? And we ran into some individuals because we were asking people, where is it that seniors, what kind of activities they have for seniors? Because we had kept ourselves active and wanted to continue. And they told us there was a group of people, Edwin, I think, was one of those individuals, Adele Hurst, Tom Cersey. We ran into those people, and they said, hey, we are working, have been working with the city, and we have a place that we can all meet. And so they, we joined the senior center that they had developed through your folks' help and all of their work and the work that you had done, and became charter members of CAS. And we haven't regretted it one bit of moving here into Kyle. Never regretted being a part of the senior center. And we often, people often wonder what really defines a senior citizen. It's not just age because we're all going to age. But it's, to me, senior citizens are, first of all, not one ethnic group. It's combined, all ethnic groups. The majority of them have the desire to keep active and are looking for somewhere to go and then join in with a group to become active and get into their organization and the activities that they provide. In the senior center, we've joined the senior center in 2006. And Ed and I have been arguing and fighting ever since, but best of friends. But anyway, we, like I said, wanted to keep ourselves active. And we joined the senior center, and the senior center, the activities that they have in the senior center is outlined to help people with their balance, with their memory, thinking. They have, they have exercise classes. They have people playing cards, both got to use their mind and not too much, you know, dealing in the cards and type thing, dancing, that type of thing. All of these activities is what keeps a person able to maintain their mental and physical abilities. I mean, people can't believe that folks like Ed and myself are at the age we are and as active as we are. But we don't feel that old. There's things we can't do now that we used to do. We just accept that, okay? But all of the folks in the CAS senior center, again, I point out, all of their activities are outlined, and there'll be more coming in the future, activities, is outlined to the point of people using their mind and people using their physical ability. As I said, you know, exercising, dancing, playing cards, checkers, and that type of thing. So we want to thank Kyle, City Council, and the Mayor, all of you for the work that you have helped us to get this far. We need to go further. And as a couple have pointed out, you folks and folks after you are going to become seniors. And you're going to be able to take advantage of what we're trying to do with you that's going to benefit senior citizens, people of age, for years to come. So we ask that, we appreciate and know you've done quite, quite well with all the things you've provided for this CAS group. And we appreciate it. We appreciate it. We can't thank you enough. What there need, more needs to be done has been pointed out. We need more room, and we need to have more activities. And we need a place to do that. And us taking the diagram of the building and drawings and the outline of the interior and the activities that could be, could be done in those areas is a drawing. We got the drawing. We're going to continue on with blueprints, things that have to, have to be done, going through you folks for permits and that type of thing, insurance, that type of thing. But that piece of ground, we can't just put that drawing on that piece of ground that you so willingly gave to us to use because it's not going to do a thing except sit there. We've got to do something. We've got to put a building there. And this building that can be used not only for our generation, but for you folks and generations to come. So again, we come before you today as thankful seniors for all you've done for us. But we need to ask that you try to do a little bit more and try to find out somewhere in your budget you can allocate and help us. We know that we, you can't do it all. We've got our own responsibilities of getting donations and going, talking with people and this type of thing to come up with the money, money to build that senior center. So we're asking that you folks, if it's in your, within your heart, to take a hard look at your budget and see if somewhere in there you can fit in some help financially so that we can make that new senior center that'll be there for years and help out many, many seniors. So thank you, and God bless all of you for all that you've done for our senior citizens and the citizens and for the people, your other citizens here. And I'm sure you're going to continue on because evidently you all got a good heart because you've certainly been well, treated us well, and we certainly appreciate it. And God bless you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. These are all the public comment forms I have. Is there anybody else wishing to speak before I close public comments? Seeing no one else?
No, Don has taken up his two minutes and mine.
Seeing nobody else willing, wishing to speak, I will go ahead and close public comments. Public comments are now closed. We'd like to thank you very much for coming out here and sharing your thoughts with us. We've been in several meetings. Me personally, this week with our city manager with this very topic being the point of conversation. Scott, I'm going to hand it over to you to just share a little bit of the strategy that we have for the senior center.
All right. Thank you. Apologize for having my back to everyone. Don't like that. But you can see that the last time we've really been together and spoken, my hair's grown a little longer. And I think the most surprising thing besides my hair is Robert's beard. So that was definitely a surprise when I saw you up there. We'll call it the COVID hair, right?
Two years.
Two years, right? That's about mine, too. Seniors, we have had a lot of conversations. Larry, definitely. I think the first real, we'll call it hurdle that we crossed was when we met over at our Linebarger Lake property several years ago. And we've got five acres over there from the city, that beautiful property. I believe you've all seen that. If not... She wants me to sing to you. This is not on yet. So there we go. So we have been working with you, with Mr. Butler, you know, for several years. And I think we have a decent plan now. Like Mayor Protem said, there have been a lot of conversations behind the scenes to figure out how to fund an ambitious project, $10 million, at a pretty aggressive, you know, $300 a foot, I guess, you know, for that size center. And that's probably in the, in the right line of thinking in today's pricing. There are not great sources of funding out there from a federal standpoint, but there are some. And we've been asking around to see where the best bucket of money is for a project this ambitious, especially one that's, that's more on the bricks and mortar side and less on the, on the planning side. We had talked earlier on about going to Hayes County and seeing if they would partner with us. I still hope that that becomes a reality as we flesh out the plans more. You know, take it from, from more of a, just a concept plan to more of like a 50% or 30%. And we can throw some, some better numbers at it. I think it's a good time to go approach the county. I'll share one potential bucket of money, and this is going to be new for the City Council, too. So I don't really want to go too far in. But as the city of Kyle grows and as we heard a few numbers here a minute ago, we are above 50,000 population, which makes us what the, the government calls us, an entitlement city. And that's through a program that's been around for a long time called the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG for short. Those CDBG monies are, are given competitively for cities under 50,000 and entitled to cities over 50,000 based on a population formula. So our population, yeah, we're, we're about 60,000 now, but you know, the census will have us pegged somewhere around 51, 52, right in there. That should give us several hundred thousand dollars and maybe more per year now in these entitlement funds. The thing about CDBG monies is they typically are used for what's called LMI purposes or low to moderate income purposes. And that's defined by the census tract that we belong to. Here in Kyle, our census tract doesn't really apply for LMI monies. They, because we're, we're so suburban to the Austin community, our, our one census tract that the whole city falls into is outside that threshold of typical LMI. So we have to find non-LMI eligible projects. And the construction of a senior facility is considered an eligible project under CDBG. So that is something that, to the councils, I now turn to you, it's, it's something that I was going to share a little later in this presentation. But we don't have our, our formula. We don't know what our allocation is. And again, we, we don't have all the ins and outs of becoming an entitlement city. We still have to actually go through the process and apply through the San Antonio office to make sure that we can even receive those funds. So there's, there's a lot coming, you know, of potential, I'll, I'll call it. And if we can be eligible for those funds, and again, if our census tracts or tract precludes us from the more traditional type of funding, then perhaps we can use that anticipated annual allotment for some sort of debt service payment on a center like this. So, you know, three, four, $500,000, whatever that's going to be, and especially as we grow, that, that number will continue to increase with our growth. We can apply that toward debt service. Many conversations still to come, but it's, it's something that's promising today.
Thank you, Scott. I will go ahead and hand this off to Mayor to start walking us through the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Keep what you're doing. Do it again. Keep doing it.
Thank you, County.
So where are we at? Just start? All right. Next agenda item, Scott.
There we go. Thank you, Grant. Thanks, staff. We love being here on a Saturday morning with all of you. I know that sentiment is shared in return. Based on that, I did share the, the presentation with the council and hope you've each had a chance to go through that. You're, you're welcome. You had the budget sent a little earlier, and this in this year is a little different than prior years. This is our budget number two. So you recall, we've added a third budget work session. In this meeting, our goal is to basically take what we thought we heard from you from the first meeting, based on everything else we heard from the citizens, the household survey, the staff priorities, the community priorities from, from groups like CAS. And we, we put all of that into the budget and balanced the budget as we are required to do. And with our, our fund balances still intact, even after all that work, it was a lot of heavy lift to get to this point, but we're going to give you a chance to take, you know, a month or so between this meeting and the next meeting at the end of July and come up to what we hope is to be a final budget proposal for adoption in August. With that said, we've got the budget priorities. Here's our, our outline. This outline is going to follow the meeting for the last, for the first budget workshop, so I'm not going to go too deep into this. The priorities, you'll see here, the six priorities that we've, we've already discussed, massaged a little bit based on the, the feedback we heard again in the first budget workshop. All funds total, we have the, the largest budget in our history that we're presenting to you by a significant margin. And you'll see that the majority of this in green is due to $120 million CIP anticipated expenditures. So the city is definitely growing, and as a growing city, usually the, the highest needs are capital infrastructure, and that's what we are seeing here. General fund budget is also at 33, almost $34 million. A lot of that has to do with transfers, and so we'll go through those here in a few. Our budget highlights, 172 million total, 124 CIP. We have 18 new positions. So there were about 300 proposed by, by staff, so we, we have cooled that down to the top 18. Our property tax rate, it will not be given until the July 25 deadline for the, for the county. Property tax rate increase for public safety center geobonds, we've, we were able to defer the rate increase by another year, so that won't hit until FY '23. And hopefully, we can absorb a little more growth as we look at how that's going to impact the rate. We are not planning an increase in storm drainage fees or in wastewater rates. We had a three-year 10% rate increase planned for our water utility. We are hoping to bring that down. We have a plan for 6% increase this year. Our goal was to kind of break that into a 6% and 4% increase into next year. With that said, we are also anticipating that our growth can help chew into the 4% next year as well as the American Rescue Plan funds that we still don't have our allocation to us yet, and they're still kind of crafting the rules around that. We're anticipating around $12 million if those rules stand in place that they have today. With $12 million, we would apply that toward our 1626 tank, take point from Arwa, or, you know, it's also where the city's Pressure Plane One and Pressure Plane Two meet in the middle. That is, you'll, you'll notice about an $8 million year one expenditure in our CIP. Assuming we get those funds, that $12 million will continue that, that expenditure. And it is our hope that we will no longer need that 4% and can actually bring even the 6% increase down for the water rate payers. So that's, that is something that we're, we're crossing our fingers, and hopefully, by our next budget workshop, we will know for sure and be able to have a better percentage increase planned. 2.5% increase in solid waste per contract and no other increase in fees or charges for services. Slide six. $21 million for improvements to parks and trails. And you'll see how that's broken out between Central Park, Cultural Trail, here's Memorial Park, Sportsplex, City Square Park, park improvements, system-wide, and Plum Creek Trail. $15 million for our public safety center, 20, almost $21 million for street maintenance, and then almost $9 million for downtown and economic development projects. We'll get into each of those here a little bit more in detail later. Slide seven. $30 million water system utility improvements. And that, a big portion of that is our payment to Arwa. Okay. $26 million for wastewater utility system improvements, $2 million for storm drainage, almost a half a million for sidewalk maintenance, rehab, and construction, $2 million for citywide beautification, 9.9 for the city's debt service payments, 2.2 for new equipment, heavy construction and building improvements, $1 million for the new positions, and $165,000 in lease payments for new vehicles. Slide eight. $300,000 for lobbyists to secure federal and state funding. So most likely two separate firms in, in that amount. $230,000 for our Uber voucher program. And we heard a little earlier the comment about public transportation, and this council is investing heavily into public transportation. $155,000 for a comprehensive plan update, $150 for downtown revitalization, architectural, and planning services, and we'll get into that a little bit more. $150,000 for pay parity adjustments, and we'll get into that a little bit more. $50,000 for arts, our arts program. We've got a good presentation planned for council in this upcoming council meeting. $50,000 for the Kyle Brand Ambassador Services, which you've heard about already. $317,000, $318,000 for pay increase on average for the police officers. That's per the civil service contract. This is the final year of that three-year pay increase for, for those sworn officers. And then a $323,000 or 5% average performance-based merit pay increase for all non-sworn city employees. And then finally, while this has not been officially approved by council, it is on the next agenda. We've heard from several of you that you would like to see this in this meeting, so we did add this as a bullet to the slide, the designation of Juneteenth as a city holiday, as it was recently approved as a federal holiday. Moving into the table here of the new positions on slide nine. Under the city manager department, we are proposing two positions. The first one is an emergency management coordinator. So this is a position that was heavily discussed during the winter storm Uri, and we have talked about this position over several, we'll call it disasters, over the last five, six years. This position, we have it reporting to the city manager's office. We would have that person reporting to Jerry in particular to begin, and their, their role for the first several years would be to make sure everyone's trained, make sure the funding is, is coming our way, or we're eligible for funding for a disaster, work with the mayor who would be part of those disaster declarations. And in particular, one thing that we have in the budget this year is we have over $1 million of emergency generators budgeted. Most of those are out of the water utility. We have one for this facility, which would also apply for the, the police station next door. That would be something that they would also be going to Tedom or some other federal source to see if they can get those emergency generators planned or approved through that federal money rather than the general and water funds. So things like that, that they would be working on. The second position is an LGC. That stands for Local Government Corporation. I think most of the council has, has had conversations about that position upfront. Not sure if that would be more appropriately combined even with someone that would focus on the Main Street program, but the LGC in general would be a, a function of a designated nonprofit by the city council that would be responsible for buying, selling, negotiating, rehabbing certain properties throughout the city, on behalf of the city. And since we are moving into that space a little more, we do have a, a facility planned for acquisition and then rehab in this budget. And you'll see that a little later in the CIP. So this would be a position, if the council would like to fund that this year, to basically birth and grow that program for development and redevelopment. We have an engineering technician. Leon, do you want to explain that position?
Mayor and Council, Leon Barba, city engineer. Right now, our staff that we have is spending quite a bit of time on administrative duties. We get a lot of, we have a lot of contracts going on. We're monitoring the invoices that come in, so we each one of us take our projects. We look at those invoices, make sure they're correct, and then we process those. Each one of those takes time, obviously, for us. And there's other things that we need to be working on. There's things in the ordinances that we, we've been sitting on that we need to change or add or improve and things like that that we can't work on because we keep getting pulled off. One good example is the impact fees that we charge. I handle those myself. It's all based on your meter size and, and the deplatting date. And it doesn't take me long to do that at this point in time because I've done it so many times, but I have to verify the numbers, double-check, and make sure that we're charging the right fees, and I have to go back and forth with the developer contractor to make sure that they're using the right-sized meters and that we're calculating the right numbers. But that takes time. That's, it doesn't, it's not difficult. It's just look at the chart and, and move on, but I've got to do that. So that pulls me away from the projects that I need to focus on. I need to look at, I get involved with easements on a routine basis. Every easement that we acquire, I have to touch it. I have to get involved. I have, there's questions. There's things that I need to get involved with. This person would help me with those, track those, make sure that we handle those properly and review those and prepare those. But those are the things that, they're not really engineering. They're just more administrative-type things. So that's the kind of position that I'm looking for. And then there's, there's spreadsheets that we have that we need to maintain, even the smart sheet. I do that, update that about every two weeks in my spare time, try to get that updated. But those are things that this, this person would help me with and help the other staff with.
Thank you, Leon. We have a, an administrative assistant broken out between environmental services and trades and facility maintenance. And Chance, did you want to mention her?
I'm Tim Cropley. I'm the facility manager. Currently, between Chance and I, Chance runs the environmental services. Tim, you need to use the microphone or the mic. Okay, that's all. Sorry. All right, sorry about that. I'm Tim Cropley. I'm the facility manager for the city of Kyle. Currently, Chance, who runs the environmental services division, and myself, we are operating without an administrative assistant. We do all of our own paperwork, invoicing, scheduling, dispatching, and along with our other duties. And what we're asking for is an administrative assistant to help take some of that load off of us. We have enough work for one person, but not enough for two people. So what we're asking is to split that position between the two divisions at about 26, 356 on each side. And that would, that would free us up to do more of the administrative things that a manager should be doing rather than being hands-on in the field or doing the dispatching, answering the phone, reconciling the budget and, and those types of issues. So that's what we're, that's what we're asking for. That's the reason it's up on there. If you have any questions or anything, I'm available at any time. Thank you.
My, my goal was actually to kind of get through these and then go into questions, but since Tim's there at the podium, if, if you want to ask, that's, that's fine. Go ahead and stop us.
No, and I'll certainly dive deeper into all these positions once we get to it, but I was wondering about that. So that position is actually one person that we would hire for each one of those?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's good.
Correct. Human resources, Sandra?
I am asking for an HR assistant. Currently, it's three of us, so we have the director, myself, and then we have a HR manager and a HR journalist. The HR journalist focuses on recruiting, about 80, 85% of her time is of recruiting. And HR development is the other percentage that is missing because we, right now, the times for hiring is very critical. Our turnover is high, but everybody doesn't fire. Their turnover is high. We can't find qualified applicants, so we need to get creative.
And my HR manager, she also serves as a civil service director. So the majority of her time is spent with the police department with new, bringing in new officers. Okay, that's all, sorry. All right, sorry about that. I'm Tim Cropley, I'm the Facility Manager for the city of Kyle. Currently, Chance, who runs the Environmental Services Division, and myself, we are operating without an administrative assistant. We do all of our own paperwork, invoicing, scheduling, dispatching, along with our other duties. And what we're asking for is an administrative assistant to help take some of that load off of us. We have enough work for one person, but not enough for two people. So, what we're asking is to split that position between the two divisions at about twenty-six, three fifty-six on each side. And that would free us up to do more of the administrative things that a manager should be doing rather than being hands-on in the field or doing the dispatching, answering the phone, reconciling the budget and those types of issues. So, that's what we're asking for, that's the reason it's up on there. If you have any questions or anything, I'm available at any time. Thank you.
My goal was actually to kind of get through these and then go into questions, but since Tim's there at the podium, if you want to ask, that's fine, go ahead and stop us.
No, and I'll certainly dive deeper into all these positions once we get to it. But I was wondering about that. So, that position is actually one person that we would hire for each one of those?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's good.
Human Resources, Sandra?
I am asking for an HR assistant. Currently, it's three of us, so we have the Director, which is myself, and then we have a HR manager and a HR journalist. The HR journalist focuses on recruiting about eighty, seventy-five percent of her time is recruiting. And HR development is the other percentage that is missing because we, right now, the times for hiring is very critical. Our turnover is high, but everybody doesn't fire, their turnover is high. We can't find qualified applicants, so we need to get creative.
And my HR manager, she also serves as a civil service director. So, the majority of her time is spent with the police department with bringing in new officers, promotional testing and assessments, all the records maintenance, and managing Chapter 143, which is very complicated. You kind of need to be a paralegal to do that. She also handles risk management, which, right now, that's the one that's being dropped because we don't have a risk management division, per se. So, we manage the workers' compensation aspect of it. But we would like to be more proactive and review the incidents that happen and how we can prevent that to save the city money. She's also the benefits administrator for the city. So, that's why I am asking for an assistant to help with the workload that we currently have right now. If I can answer any questions.
It's up to you. If you have a question about any one of these positions while they're, they've got the floor, that's fine.
Any comments just at the end?
Yeah, well, we'll have a spot kind of near the end just to really go through your questions and comments. All right, Mariana?
All right, good morning. Mariana Spinosa, Parks and Recreation Director. We are asking for a Recreation Manager. All eighteen Parks and Recreation employees currently report directly to me. It includes from each division, Administration, Recreation, Trails, and Maintenance. The Recreation Manager will oversee the three Recreation Programmers. Will also oversee all of Athletics programming, Aquatic programming, Parks, Special Events, and then Recreation Programs. They have been tasked with elevating, stepping up Recreation programming all around with definitely challenges of not having an indoor facility. And so, being creative and innovative with our existing facilities is one of the challenges we're facing, and hence the need for Recreation Programmer. We have asked for a Parks Crew Leader. All the Park Maintenance Staff, as I mentioned, currently report directly to me. And when the split with the Environmental Services and Trades Division occurred, it also took our Parks and Grounds Maintenance Manager. The Park Maintenance Staff is in need of a day-to-day onsite supervisor in the Parks Maintenance Division side. And I am also asking for two Park Maintenance Technicians as we still have a lot of undeveloped parkland and growing additional parkland. We're adding community gardens at Post Oak, Leinburger, Seton, and Leinburger, Seton, and Kyle Vista are all areas in which I need another crew added to. And that's why we're asking for two Park Maintenance because when the split of the divisions happened again, we did lose some positions, but we're able to fill a few already. Those are our new requests.
Quick question on that, Mariana. I'm going to try to hold off towards the later, but this one stood out to me. So, this one's a couple of thousand dollars more than the two Parks Maintenance Techs we had in the budget last year? Is that just part of cost of doing business, things going up like that? Is that where that delta is?
That is correct. And Sheriff Pavez or Sandra, if the calculations came from one of y'all, but for the salaries, they'd fill them for us.
So, council member, are you asking about the Parks Maintenance Tech?
Yes, sir.
These two positions, we budgeted at the beginning of the salary range, and the dollar amounts include fringe benefits as well as payroll taxes.
Certainly. It's the increase from over last year.
Okay, certainly. And part of reason I asked this question as well, and it's going to be across the board with all positions we're looking at, we had a lengthy discussion last time about being competitive in our pay and different things like that. We have a great city staff here. It was commented on by the seniors earlier. We want to keep our staff. Obviously, being happy in their roles is important to the culture that you have set here, Scott. You and I have talked about that before. It's a great culture, but we also want to be competitive and not lose our folks. So, I didn't have a problem with it, I just wanted to have an understanding of that.
Right, I'll touch on that. We're going to get into that a little bit more here as we go on. The short answer is no. It does not include the parity to the new cities that we're going to be talking about today. And that came from our last conversation. So, right now, as council knows, we have three comparison cities, of which Kyle is also a part, so we're really kind of four, but Shirts, San Marcos, and Leander, and then Kyle was in the mix. Council asked us to remove Kyle out of that calculation, but then also said that our parity communities were dragging us way below what was competitively here in central Texas. So, we've spent quite a bit of time, we've gone out, we've looked at different cities, and we have three new cities that we are going to request that we shift to for parity purposes.
You're saying San Marcos and Leander are dragging us below? I don't understand that.
Shirts predominantly is dragging us below. And so, it's Kyle and Shirts that were skewing the average well below. We are, okay, so we'll just get into that, I guess. We'll hit it right now. Yeah, we'll hit it right now. Mayor likes to go straight to the point, so we are going to, we're going to keep San Marcos. We are going to request moving from Leander to Georgetown. One of the reasons for that is because Georgetown does an annual comp study. And so, we know that from a current standpoint, they're really good, and they typically will do more like Texas as a whole, Texas cities. And then the other one is Round Rock. So, those are the three communities that invest into their compensation. So, San Marcos, Georgetown, and Round Rock. Now, Sandra has gone to those three communities and has done a kind of a spot comparison of twenty, how many, Sandra? Twenty-nine, almost thirty positions. What are you coming up with?
For example, I have a street technician, sorry, not a street, the parker can make a technician. Kyle starts that position at fourteen ninety. But Round Rock starts at fifteen twenty-one, San Marcos fifteen seventy-five, Shirts thirteen fifteen, Leander thirteen ninety, which that's, those two cities bring us rehab. So, the average is fourteen sixty-two, which is below Kyle. So, that's the reason why we need to.
So, we'll take the low cities out, put the high cities in to accomplish what? I don't understand the whole point of that.
The conversation was about...
Why don't we just decide what we want to pay folks? Because Leander and San Marcos are both at where we are or above. It doesn't make sense to me to...
Yeah, I think the problem is we're losing people to Leander.
Nothing that we pay has to do with this idea of comparison cities. You know, we say San Marcos and Leander because they are more comparable. Georgetown and Round Rock are not comparable to us. They are years, decades ahead of us in population, funding. So, I mean, I just, it doesn't make sense to me. I do think we should try to be comparable, but it just doesn't make sense to compare us to Georgetown and Round Rock. Leander and San Marcos are much closer towns. And if it brings the pay down to, I mean, like, that's the point, is to say, all right, yeah, it looks like we are on par with these other towns, maybe we want to be better than them. But to, you know, I would think it would put council in a strange spot if we're looking at, like, hey, we're not paying as much as Round Rock and Georgetown. Like, that's, we'll go broke chasing those two towns.
I don't think that's kind of what we're trying to do. I think what's happening right now is that San Marcos, Kyle, a lot of the towns surrounding us are having trouble keeping staff because of the, not because of the surrounding cities, probably because of the private sector. So, I think we're just trying to find a way to be a little more proactive on paying our staff a little better, especially those in the entry levels where we train them and then they go off and find jobs in the private sector. So, I think that's kind of what we're trying to do, we just don't know which way to approach that.
I think the private sector is always going to be above us. I think there are other things that we can do to be comparable with the private sector. And I think you make a good point. And I think the mayor makes a solid point as well. We've got to find a medium there. Where did you say we were comparable to, Leander and San Marcos?
Leander is way below, and San Marcos is higher.
San Marcos is higher.
So, San Marcos, that position starts at fifteen seventy-five, and we start at fourteen ninety.
Fourteen ninety.
We just lost a staff member, eighteen dollars an hour to San Marcos, just lost.
What were they making here?
Fourteen ninety.
Oh, there it is, yeah. But I guess my point is, San Marcos was a comparable city, so that would be relevant. But it's not anymore because what we just said was, San Marcos isn't enough of a comparable city?
I think it is.
I just don't understand that.
That's for a Parks Technician, so...
Well, we were using too many comp cities that were bringing us well below San Marcos even, so...
San Marcos, Leander, and Shirts. Both San Marcos and Leander have higher populations and bigger budgets and better pay.
But lower pay, Leander was lower pay, and so was Shirts on that.
This is also a beginning phase, so it may not be like that.
This is somebody coming in without experience.
Now, that's not all the case. You know, Leander has made some really big moves on pay in the last year, I would say. You know, with engineers, we know.
San Marcos just did as well.
Right, it's just when you make that move for a specific position, so that we do that, we're doing that across the board. We shouldn't be looking at Round Rock and Georgetown, I don't think, as our primary comparable cities because they are not comparable towns to us. They both have, you know, a hundred thousand population and, you know, I really like the ones that we had. I thought if San Marcos is above and Leander is below, then like, that's a pretty good comparable city. We compare ourselves with San Marcos and Leander on visually everything. We never compare ourselves to Round Rock and Georgetown.
Well, maybe the question is bringing Shirts out? I mean, because that's the one that's bringing us way down. So, you know, San Marcos, eighteen dollars, almost nineteen dollars that they're, we lost our employee to.
I'd almost prefer New Braunfels to Round Rock and Georgetown.
Also, so maybe you look at Flugerville, you know, they're very comparable from a...
I'm not, it doesn't matter what they pay, it's about the comparable city. If New Braunfels is below, then fine, but New Braunfels is not below us in any, like, they are a town of our size on the corridor between Austin and San Antonio. We should compare ourselves to them, you know, and if they pay less, then they pay less, but...
Does that require to compare our infrastructure? Because I think we are a lot less advanced than those cities, and so we're asking a lot more from our employees.
It's not about, it's not about how much we pay, that's not the point. It's about who we're comparing ourselves against.
Right, right, and I agree, I agree. But I also think that we have to look at, we are, we're not anything like any of those cities. We are one of the fastest-growing cities in Texas and in the U.S. So, we are going to ask a little bit more from our employees. We're building roads, we're doing things that these other cities have already done. They're doing basic maintenance.
Is the point to, is the point to say, my objective is to raise pay, therefore, I'm going to go find cities who pay more and compare myself against them?
No.
Or is the objective to say, I want to figure out which cities are most comparable to the city of Kyle and compare myself against them? If the objective is the latter, San Marcos, New Braunfels, Buda, Leander, Flugerville, we know the cities that we compare ourselves against, and it's never Round Rock and Georgetown. If we're going for Round Rock and Georgetown, it's just to increase pay. And I just don't think that's right. So, just to be clear, which cities do we have in them? Because I think you make a solid point, I agree with you. Those cities are not what we are. I mean, they're twice the size in population, some of them. So, we really need to, I guess, narrow down what cities we want. I agree, Shirts probably should go, but we could replace it with a more comparable city. I agree with you, the latter is the goal. It's not just the first part. There is a balancing act here. Well, I kind of like the idea of comparing ourselves against the cities we actually compare ourselves against, realizing we're right on par, and then bumping above to say we want to lead. Again, it's not about compensation, it's about actually understanding where we are.
So, be taking Shirts out and putting in a Flugerville, for example, or a New Braunfels? So, we'll come back, or both, okay. All right, we'll look at that analysis. So, full circle, we are just, in our budget, we have the hundred fifty of pay parity for the four that are currently in the parity analysis. We can bring back something with, you know, how it would look going against the others. All right, who's next? Police, Jeff?
So, the Strategic Analyst, that's our first one, it's on the front. That is to meet the requirements of the Home Rule Charter and Proposition F. I'll try to speak loudly, or I'll kind of borrow that one. Chief, if you would begin with payroll. Oh, yes, sorry. All right, hopefully that'll get it. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. So, the Accounts Payable and Payroll Technician, that is to assist Laura. She's our sole office technician that performs administrative duties. Her job has grown to the work of about three people, and she's doing that by herself. So, in order to make our payroll and our payables, we are asking for an additional personnel. The next one is Strategic Analyst. This is designed to meet the requirements of the Home Rule Charter and Proposition F to produce the reports, pull the data, and provide timely information to both the internal staff as well as the mayor and council to meet those objectives. Number three, Sergeant of Community Engagement. That is one step in a three-year plan to more predominantly engage the public with our police services. They will also be our professional standards and our Internal Affairs Operations Supervisor. And they will supervise the Strategic Analyst, and they will also supervise the future community policing officers that we hope to use for the community engagement. The next one is one more detective. The caseload has increased to such a degree that we need to add another detective to manage all of the cases for investigative purposes. With the return of court now after COVID as well, our detectives are being subpoenaed for court testimony for the last eighteen months' worth of cases they've been working on, so they'll be less available to work their cases while they go testify in court. So, we need the other detective to help carry that load. Lastly, the Narcotics Investigator. As I mentioned in kind of great detail in our first budget meeting, the task force that was between the Hays County Sheriff's Office and the city of San Marcos has dissolved. Therefore, there's no narcotics task force covering the entire area, which means also the city of Kyle. We can participate in a joint agreement with the city of San Marcos. However, we have to contribute to that agreement to get the benefit of their assistance and expertise. We certainly have enough work, so we are asking for a narcotics investigator to get that residual. With one position assigned to the task force, we'll get the full force and effect of everything that San Marcos has to offer, so we'll still be covered. And that's our position, sir.
I want to just maybe make the point here before we get to harbor that you'll notice in these positions that we are advocating that much of this has to do with efficiencies in the organization rather than just adding to line staff. You know, we've grown, that the middle is being stretched, so you'll see a lot of these positions as being supervisory or technical in nature, you know, to help the efficiencies of the operation. That's why you won't see the four patrol positions that were requested.
Gotcha. I've got to, since we're on it, I can't help myself. So, Accounts Payroll Tech, that's similar to the four administrative assistant positions that were in the kitchen sink meeting on May first?
Yes, sir. This one would pay the bills. We have a lot of invoices and stuff to process. We'll also assist with the payroll, which has grown. We're about eighty-five employees, and it's just more than Laura can be expected to do as a single person. So, we'll divide basically her job into two different positions.
And that's the supervisor? Is that the one that Hannah reports to? Is that in that division?
So, no, sir. Hannah, being that you're speaking of, she is our NIBR's compliance technician and also makes recordings for 911 for preparation of court. She reports to the Records Supervisor, to Bianca, and that's an entirely different division. Laura reports to the Administrative Division of the Department, which is Captain and myself.
Okay, but this is one of those administrative positions. You and I had a discussion about this. It's more, most comparable to that administrative assistant position to help with that?
It is one of the group that we asked for, yes, sir. This will not help necessarily the Records Division, Hannah and others that we spoke about. This will, this is really taking Laura's administrative position and dividing that into two.
Okay, so, because the receptionist position was more like that records specialist?
Yes, sir, that is the equivalent to the one we talked about, yes, that's the one.
Okay, and Strategic Analyst, know all about that. Sergeant of Community Engagement, that's similar to our Community Outreach Officers. Like you said, that's starting that division, they will ultimately oversee that department?
Yes, sir.
The Detective, that's the CID Detective?
Yes, correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's, okay. And then the Narcotics Investigator, obviously, that collaboration with the county and San Marcos, this would be that position to have our sheet at the table?
Yes, sir, and the residual on that of employing one Narcotics Investigator and then getting the full force and effect of those that work in San Marcos and bringing that team here to work on narcotics cases is immeasurable.
Okay, and then the Crime Victim Liaison, that one we're still getting through grant funding victims. So, this will be the second year of that?
So, we have a grant application for year one. We anticipate getting that grant. I can't say it's all but assured, but we anticipate receiving that grant, and we have built into our funding here within our budget, operating budget for next year, to cover our portion, our small portion of the excess.
Fantastic, so this would be the first, potentially be year one, and then year two would be, because it's a two-year grant?
That's a grant-funded position, it'll be grant-funded for two years, yes.
So, in three years, we'll be coming back to hopefully fund that position through the city. The Professional Standards Policy position as a lieutenant, I believe, or sergeant, that was not one we were able to get in, and then the... that was not one we were able to get in, and then the, um, let me see here. Yeah, so, uh.
Any comments about that, or?
Yes, sir, so what we were going to do is ha- task this sergeant that's going to do the community engagement for year one to initiate that as well and do our professional standards and begin the work towards accreditation with the State Police Chiefs Association called Recognition. And then next, we would pursue the, the national standard as well. So, that sergeant's going to have those duties until we can grow that, uh, division into a lieutenant-led position.
Okay, that's all my questions for now.
Yes.
I have a question. All right, in the, um, last five years, how many police officers have we hired?
In the last five years, I think we've added five sworn, I believe, was the information we got from finance.
Those are like patrol officers?
Uh, some were detectives, we grew by detectives as well. We added a juvenile, uh, juvenile investigator that we had received on a grant previously, and that grant expired, so we absorbed that one. Those are the ones that come to mind growing. Yeah, those are the, I'm sorry, out of the five, uh, they were, they were at the officer level. We may have made some movements laterally internally. I think we added two detective positions a few years ago, and then we added the juvenile officer. And right now with our vacancies, those are the ones that I can think of, sorry.
Okay, Scott, in the last five years, what has our population increase been?
Two or three thousand?
The last five years we've been. I, I almost believed you. Not relevant at all.
So, yeah, so to be clear, I, I understand the point you're getting ready to make. Initially, when, when we were sitting down five years ago, the conversation was about unfilled positions, positions that were authorized that were not being filled, and so the requests came, were coming in to add more positions, but we, we were, I don't know, we had some eight vacancies at that point in time?
Eight to ten, yes, sir.
So, the conversation changed at that point to, uh, compensation, because we, it didn't matter how many. We even added a few extra at some point. We didn't even fund them, if you'll remember, because we didn't even think it was possible to get to the point where we'd be able to hire them. So, we started focusing on increasing wages, increasing benefits, uh, and, and trying to make sure that we didn't have to lower our standards in order to get those officers. So, so that's really been what the push has been over the last five years. So, now we're to that point where we're starting to get closer to that parity. I don't know about Georgetown and Round Rock, but probably in, in our air, neck of the woods, we're getting closer. San Marcos and Hayes County are the two I think of there. Uh, so now, now they are, i- is the time to probably start talking about beefing up sworn officers.
Correct, and I, and I'll add the facility too, that was a major consideration to have the.
But it wasn't like, hey, our population's increasing, and we're just gonna, we're not doing anything with the PD, because we, their, their budget has been going up tremendously in the form of wages, which was when we made them forced rank, that's what they said they wanted more than new positions.
Yeah, a couple, a couple other things to add. So, non-sworn positions, we've added maybe ten?
Yeah, we've probably added ten between dispatch, records.
Right, so, the, the department has grown quite a bit. The, the issue with adding patrol or sworn positions is it, it comes in bundles based on the shifts. So, you know, it's, it's a group of four, you know, that you, you bring in. Adding one in actually kind of throws off the way they do their scheduling.
Okay, it just disheartens me that we, I don't see not even one patrol officer knowing the growth.
Well, we, we'd have to backfill ones.
And I understand that, I understand that, totally get it. Um, it just is a little concerning for me, knowing that the city's growing that fast, and I just want to make sure we're covered. Uh, for me, it's infrastructure and, and safety for the residents, because if you don't have that in a city, it doesn't matter how big your population is. I just, I just want to protect our residents. So, um, that's it.
I, I do understand, and Mr. Sellers said it just right, they come in bundles, so, uh, it, at the current five that we're requesting, we just couldn't squeeze in four, but yet achieve the other requirements that we have placed on the PD, so.
So, how many openings do we have now for patrol officers?
We currently have two vacancies, and we have fifteen that are in background investigation right now, so we hope to have those two filled by September first, is kind of our goal.
So, if we do that by September first, we'll see them on the streets in eighteen months?
Uh, it, it depends if they're already certified. Some of those fifteen that are in background have a T-CO certification. Those would be on the street and riding, performing their duties by next summer, so about a year. Those that will need to go to a police academy, those are, yes, ma'am, those are about eighteen months out.
Thank you.
All right, Harper?
Mayor Council, Harper Wilder, Public Works. The first position, management analyst. This morphed from, as I understand it, I wasn't in this meeting, I apologize, because I was, uh, out with a family emergency, but, um, I, I understand that this position morphed from our street, uh, not street, uh, maintenance, maintenance, fleet maintenance supervisor and assistant, um, looking at having our, our own division in that department. And went to requesting a management analyst that will kind of, uh, analyze all of our equipment, uh, let us know, you know, as far as oil changes, uh, regular maintenance, preventative maintenance, keep up with the heavy construct, uh, heavy equipment, uh, equipment that we, that we regularly have, outside third parties come in and do the maintenance for. So, that, that's what I understand that that position is there. Second one, permit administrator, right-of-way construction inspector. This is a, this is its own department, really, um, that we have implemented in the past, recent past, where any, but, any, let's say, other utility or construction company comes in and they want to do right-of-way work, uh, here in the city. Prior to us looking at this, they would just go into our right-of-way, put a line in. Um, we really didn't have a say, nor did we know about it. In the last, I guess, two years, um, we've got a, a program in place. There is a permit process that they have to go to now and fill out to where we know who's coming into our right-of-way. We also have a say who goes into our right-of-way. Depending on whether or not it's in the text dot right-of-way, we still get notified about it, at least so that we know who is in there. If you look at city of Austin, I've talked with Leon about this, they have an entire division that handles these kinds of things, because it's a in-depth process where you will go, uh, look at the utilities that are in that particular area in question, um, look at where do you want them to go and still preserve room for you, uh, where we, the city, may want to place a line in the future, whether it water, wastewater, storm drainage. We're deciding all that, and you're critiquing each area. So, it's a time-consuming thing, um, that we're now doing, and this would be, basically be the start of making this division in the future, I guess you could say. Uh, as well as someone that's dedicated to this to go out after, let's say, a gas company goes and lays a line, um, they would go out there and look at it and make sure that they've done the proper cleanup and the processes that we would expect. Next position, actually the next, I guess, three, or two, or two, but kind of three. The next two are a cleanup, basically, in our public works department. In your water and wastewater, street construction, street maintenance, it's set up with supervisors, you know, we'll have foremen's, crew leaders and whatnot. Tim Sanford, our division manager for our treatment and operations, um, in his department, it's not set up that way, and we've always talked about making it like the others so that it's uniform, because his guys don't have those supervisors, um, like that. So, this is kind of cleaning it up, and Tim's trying to put something together for the water production that matches the rest of public works, and that's what those two are. The reclassification is more along the same lines, changing somebody's, uh, position, changing, uh, a position over, uh, to match up as a production operator. I want to say there was a minimal difference in that reclass also, wasn't it, Tim? And, uh, that's it for our positions.
Quick question, Prevez. Uh, for the funding source, that shows that it's split up between four different funds. Remind me what SDUF utility fund is?
That's the str- uh, storm drainage. So, we have general fund, water utility, wastewater utility, and storm drainage.
To fund that position, is it a varying breakdown percentage?
It's about evenly.
Evenly spread?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Um, so on the, both of the slides, and this is just a curiosity question. It looks like the total is one, two, three, four, two, four, three for both. Is, was that strategic? Did you just like come up with a number and divide it by two? I'm just curious. The total looks to be the same, is this one? So, I didn't know how that was figured out.
Are you looking at the title?
Oh, never mind, okay, it is the title. Okay, so next time, okay, I guess it's, it's the same slide twice done, okay. I was confused, thank you.
So, when you're on slide, the second slide, if you're wondering what the total is, you can see at the top, or if you're on the first slide, you can see at the top.
I see, it's just carried over.
All right, so we took a little more time on the positions, because I know that was a, a big point of conversation last time. Again, a lot of requests, and these are the ones that, uh, we felt went to the top from an organizational standpoint. There's obviously another couple months here that, you know, if, if we need a different position and we can talk about it. Uh, you know what, let's, let's hold off on, on requests. We'll get to the end, and then we'll just kind of see how it fits into the budget. Okay, all right, I'm going to jump to slide eleven. So, equipment, we won't have the department heads go through that, I'll just run through it here with you. The building, we had discussed at the last meeting, this is a new building that would go toward, uh, the environmental services and trade, you know, functions. It would be down at the wastewater treatment plant property, uh, down by Water Leaf. And that includes, you know, the, the foundation and the, and the structure. Uh, library, we have in here new flooring. You'll see a little further down is, is paint also, so a hundred twenty thousand dollars for aesthetic improvements at the library. HVAC systems, uh, for city hall and library, these are to replace, uh, very aged units. Security system replacement, you'll see that several places, places here in the budget, but, uh, public works is the first one. Floor scrubber, uh, for the Ash Pavilion from Parks. We did get a backhoe, we had a backhoe versus a, a skid steer. We, we elected to go with the backhoe. There's also some attachments for that, as well as the Ventrack attachments that will assist with our trail construction as well. Storage structure for Parks, uh, some yard expansion, uh, monies for public works as they continue to put their, uh, you know, push their, their yard a little further south. Bay heaters, this is one that, uh, you know, low temperatures as we get, uh, some of these street equipment, large street equipment, and we have to keep our oil emulsions and things like that warm. And sand, we had, we need to keep the sand warm, for example, in the event of a, an emergency. Uh, trailer-mounted air compressor and jackhammer for the pneumatic truck. Mower, public works, closed trailer for the utility, uh, water utility generators, and as I mentioned that earlier, about nine hundred thousand in, in the water and wastewater utilities there that will, will be going toward Tedom to see if we can offset that cost. Some furniture, uh, switchgear is the electrical power plant, if you will, at the wastewater treatment plant. So, that is, uh, is aged and needs, uh, upgraded, needs replaced. Disinfection station at the outfall, uh, at the Plum Creek is also aged and needs replaced, and then an automatic gate there at the Water Leaf side for the wastewater treatment plant. There's your total at two point two million for equipment. Jumping into the CIP. Uh, this is a, just an overview, and I, this should help with what Prevez was just saying a little earlier as far as, uh, different funds that we have through the city. I'm not going to take the time and do the analogy, but if you want to consider, you know, each of these funds as a different jar of, of water, you know, sometimes fun, this water goes here, sometimes that water goes there. You know, there are a lot of transfers based on the, the appropriate and allowable uses of the, the monies. Uh, but at the end of the day, uh, the CIP is its own jar, and so we're pouring into it from the different funds, uh, based on the types of projects that are in the CIP. So, you'll see a hundred and twenty, about a hundred twenty-one million dollars of, uh, different projects, and you'll see from which fund those are al- being allocated. All right, uh, into the individual funds now. So, the, the general fund, the jar of water for the general fund, which is, uh, from property tax, sales tax, and then just general governmental fees and fines and revenues that could, that go into that jar. Uh, we've, will have this slide filled out for you at our next meeting, as well as the following, slide sixteen, so, uh, we just don't have those numbers yet. Our current property tax rate, uh, combined rate of, of two sixty-five, and you'll see how that, uh, is broken out amongst our other taxing jurisdictions. So, you see nineteen percent of all property taxes paid by citizens of Kyle go to the city of Kyle. To put that into perspective, fifty-three percent goes to the school district, okay? So, we only get nineteen percent. If I'm a citizen, if I'm a taxpayer in Kyle and I have one dollar in property tax, only nineteen cents of that dollar goes to the city of Kyle. So, we need to be very clear on that, and you'll see where the rest of that, that goes. Uh, slide eighteen, you'll see the, the historical chart of how our property tax rate has fluctuated. We've stabled out quite a bit here in the, in the last few years. That's obviously changes based on bonds, INS, interest and sinking, which is, uh, bond payments. But the MNO side, the blue side, which pays for general governmental, uh, operations, uh, is, is there, has increased a little bit as, as the staff has increased in the, the city services. Our current property tax rate on slide nineteen, you'll see us compared to our neighboring communities around central Texas. We're right, uh, comfortably in the middle. Moving to sales tax revenue in slide twenty, you'll s- see that our sales tax collections continue to rise, and you'll have noticed this year, each, uh, sales tax report significantly have risen lately. And, uh, with that, you'll notice that we are anticipating this trend to continue, especially as we know several large projects are coming online or will come online.
Scott, if I just want to add, and this, I love these slides. These are some of my favorite slides in all the presentations. But last year is a five and a half percent increase of the current year estimate in sales tax, and now we're looking at twenty-seven point four. How amazing is that? We've talked about for years increasing our revenues from sales tax, and the proof is in the pudding right here. So, I just wanted to make that, that point.
We, we are aggressive, and last year, when we had this conversation, we all, like, took a big gulp, like, are we going to get to that number? And we've far eclipsed it, right? So, it's again a very aggressive number.
I assume some of it is, is making up from an underestimate from last year, right, Prevez? Because I know we were super conservative in the pandemic, we had no idea, and then now we're having to.
Yeah, the twenty-seven percent.
It made a big impact on our ability to fund all this stuff in this budget. Because it's like, this year's sales tax plus last year's sales tax in this budget.
One thing I, I would like to add, that as we grow, sales tax is a very volatile source of revenue as compared to property tax, so we just got to keep that in mind. What goes up also comes down.
That's why it's important to keep that.
Thank you for that ominous warning, Prevez.
Except for taxes, I don't know, that'll send never.
Yeah, right.
Real quick, Prevez, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
While we're taking a quick little moment. So, on slide, wherever the capital improvement slide is, so, um, a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred twenty-one million dollars in capital improvement spending of the budget, so is it fair to say seventy percent of our budget is being spent towards CIPs?
That would be accurate, yes, sir.
As I said, the last couple of years, it's been about three out of every five dollars, so about sixty percent. And now we're at seventy percent. So, once again, just hammering points down here for, for the residents, that increased input in, uh, that we're doing to infrastructure, capital improvement projects. We're spending money towards that. Seventy percent of this budget that's being proposed is towards that. Just, like I said, important points to make.
I think we've said that each budget year for, really, the last five or six years, it's, it's another historic spending budget on capital projects, and we're, we're still going in that direction. Okay, uh, twenty-one, slide twenty-one. So, general fund, sources of funds, so this is the. Okay, 21, slide 21. So general funds, sources of funds. So this is the sources of water into the, the general fund jar. You'll see again, property tax and sales tax make up the bulk of that, but then you'll have the other sources, solid waste, fines and fees, et cetera. And then transfers in, that would be water coming from other jars through the municipal budget. Uses are how we expend those monies in the, within the general fund. You'll see predominantly it's for a service delivery and the, the departmental services made up from the general fund. And then you'll, again, the, the transfers out, that green wedge is the general fund jar pouring into other jars. And in this case, it would be predominantly the, the capital improvement.
CIP.
The CIP. Highlights from the general fund, slide 23, about $41 million in total expenditures and transfers out. There is a net decrease in expenditures. Now, the reason for this is we have fewer transfers than last year in the budget. Right? So the actual general fund from an operational standpoint is probably increasing by several million. But the transfers, the reduction in transfers in this budget has brought the overall general fund budget down by 6.7 million dollars. We have a estimated ending fund balance for the end of next year at 14 million. 8.8 million is being poured into that CIP jar. And then almost 14 of the proposed new positions are coming from the general fund, so general, general service delivery, and $760,000 in new equipment. Slide 24 is the conversation about the 2021 November bond election. We've talked about this several times, but in more depth in our last workshop. This is for design and reconstruction of major roadways, and the roadways are listed below. We did retain gap strategies at the last council meeting to help educate on the bond. And we are currently in the process, and we have actually just closed the window for the GEC, which is the General Engineering Contract Firm to oversee all the, the bonds. So these five that you'll see below are the general fund bonds, or bonded roads. If council will remember the conversation, there are multiple roads in a proposed TERZ, TERZ 3, that would also be overseen by this GEC contract. And then there are several roads up in the brick and mortar area that are also part of the overall capital expenditures for this next year. So the, the five roads that would be voted upon in November by the citizenry are Center Street from Veterans Drive. And actually, there's, there's going to be a little bit more, as you see further down. We've added streetscape improvements to this overall scope of work. So what we are going to request, Pete Dawson, who's the, the engineering firm doing the, the Center Street Stagecoach project, is that they expand their scope down Center Street to Burleson and match the streetscape from Burleson on both sides of the road, all the way up to Old Stagecoach, around the horn to 2770. That includes the roundabout at 2770 and Veterans, the roundabout at 20, or at Stagecoach, and how Stagecoach is going to come through, you know, basically it's, it's Sixth Creek Boulevard, and then the roundabout at the Five Way at Center Street. So it's a very large, ambitious project, but again, coming all the way now down to Burleson, so.
I'm really excited about the streetscape improvements. One reason is we do have to, an elementary and a middle school there. And with that growing population, I think it'll make it more walkable for the residents in that area. And I, with the backups we have there already today existing, I think as we grow, that might alleviate some of that traffic flow so we can have families walking to school instead of having to commute.
Yeah, solid point, Councilmember Rizzo. And this is straight from the visioning workshop, where we had a great discussion about this. And so yet another example in this presentation and first crack at the budget of pulling council's vision and direction. So kudos to you, Scott, and the team on that. And so a large part of that, just want to clarify why it stops at Veterans is because of the Center Street Stagecoach Road doing the rest of it there from Veterans to.
Correct. So the, the same cross section that you'll see here, it may change a little bit. This is a very, you know, downtown oriented cross section that you have right here. But you'll have something similar to, like Burleson, the Burleson cross section, with still good sidewalks and pedestrian scale lighting. So it'll change a little bit, but yes.
Sidewalks and lighting, that's, that's huge. And Councilmember Rizzo, Flores Cale, and myself walked with a number of staff. Thank you all for that attention. We did this a few weeks ago. And I, I had actually received some correspondence and emails from people who'd spotted us walking. And they were like, what are y'all doing? And, and I was delighted to tell them about, you know, the, the commitment from the council to move forward this from our direction at the visioning retreat. And so I know that's something that folks in this area have been asking for, sidewalks, pedestrian street lighting. So I'm really excited about this direction, council.
One, one thing I'll add is I, it's probably an opportunity missed, but yet we couldn't fund it in the past. So it's just missed per, per financial reasons. But we are becoming sophisticated to the point where all of our projects now, we are including undergrounding of our, our aerial utilities. We have a much better relationship today with PEC than I think we've ever had, to be honest. We've got a much better relationship with Tech Talk than I think we've ever had. Both of those organizations, they, they oversee aerial utilities in, in right of way. And so we, we have very limited say in what we can and cannot require, but they, they've agreed to work with us. And so wherever possible, in these right of way projects, which we have considered our beautification corridor, per beautification plan, we are adding the cost to underground these utilities. I think a big missed opportunity, to be honest, with Burleson. It's, it's one that still kind of gets me, but it is what it is. In the future, all of these roadways will have underground utilities as part of that. And then as other utilities like Grande, for example, or another fiber utility that, that's moving into the city as they come in, you know, our, our position is they underground everything moving forward. Windy Hill Road and BB Road are two roads on the east side that we definitely have sat in those backups on some of those major intersections, and they're, they're long, and we, we understand that. So our, our goal is to widen and improve those roadways as well. And then Marketplace Avenue, especially as the Public Safety Center will come online here in about 18 months. Our, our goal is to have a southern outlet for, for those police vehicles.
Real quick, Scott.
Yes, sir.
So I'm in agreement with these roads and these projects. I think they're fantastic. The other ones we're looking at are Goforth and Bunton, potentially with the, the, the bond. So my, my quick question is on Windy Hill. So, because I can already hear the comments from residents. Because we have, we did have Harper's crew come out and do some straightening the lines, improved a lot of the dips. I was very grateful for that because I drive on that road daily personally. And then we had the, the grant that we were able to do, the improvements that are being worked on right now. So I can already hear, you know, y'all have been out there multiple times, and now you're going to do it all over again. Can you kind of help explain that, give us a sense of why that has happened, where we're at, and why this has continued to be included?
Yeah, and I'll just try, try to paint a visual picture since we don't have a map up on the screen. Windy Hill Road is, is partially city and partially Hayes County. So it's not totally accurate, but basically the Poco Loco, a little west of the Poco Loco, or Dacey Lane, just to give us a good frame of reference. That eastward is Hayes County. They have a, a plan right now, and I think they're working on engineering to improve that to, I believe, on a three, three lane cross section through there. We have been working with our engineer on that portion, west to Cherrywood, or, yeah, basically to Cherrywood, right? Indian Paintbrush. That was a grant, state grant, it started out as FEMA, and then the, the state took it over, funded project based on the 2017, 15, was it 15? I think it was 17, 2017 flood event where, where the bridge was washed away. So the parameters were very constrained based on what was available to us through the state, which is why we started that project immediately. And we tried to do that three lane cross section anticipating what the county would do to the east. What that leaves is everything west of Cherrywood or Indian Paintbrush to the Frontage Road is still undersized. The Public Works Department went out there a couple of years ago and did a great job doing.
Resurfacing.
Resurfacing.
Not reconstructing.
Right. And there's a good.
So there's no double dipping. There was a resurface, now there's a reconstruct.
Yeah, and that's a good point. But you can see from the resident's standpoint.
Right, from their standpoint, they think, oh, you're just going back. It's like, no, we're taking, we're actually, that was to get us to this point.
Yeah. So, yeah, the reconstruction means we're basically tearing out the road and building a new one, deeper, wider. The reason why deeper is important is because the current road, as you'll, you'll know, sloughed off so much off the side. A lot of alligator cracking, et cetera, potmilling. That's when the base is failing, right? And east side clays just need a lot more work, a lot more depth. And when we rebuild our roads on the east side, we, we do GeoGrid, we do, you know, 24 inch base, different type of rock. You know, it's to prevent future cracking and spalling and things like that from happening. Plus, we'll have, you know, there's a kind of a harsh turn curve in there, like a serpentine type curve in there. So we're going to try to straighten that out a little bit as well. So that is the goals. We engineer this piece from the Frontage Road to, to Cherrywood, is that we've, we matched that cross section all the way down.
Thank you, fantastic. That's what I wanted, just to be on the record, because we, we've been discussing it, but sometimes that's hard, that's a difficult concept to grasp real quick. And then my, my final comment, moving off Windy Hill, is Marketplace Avenue, all the other ones would be street improvements. This one would be a new.
New build. Yes, sir. And since you did mention that the TERZ 3 roads, and just for the community who, who might be listening, you mentioned Goforth and Bunton, that's part of the plan, just not in the GO bond portion of the, the project. Kyle Parkway Extension from Dacey down to Lehman, that is, that is in here.
I just wanted to get on the record that we are looking at those two roads, because Bunton is always commented on, I know from residents and various different things.
Yep, to, to the end of this, edge of the city limit, basically to Uland. Okay, moving forward. Now we're in the water utility fund, so you'll see in the sources of funds on slide 26, that is basically user fees. Corporations and residents paying the water rate. And then the uses of funds, you'll see how those, that water, that jar is poured out into operations and CIP. So water supply, that goes to pay for the water we're actually using, which is important. We get our water again, for those who don't know, we have several sources of water. One is through GBRA, one is through Lyons Regional Water, and the other is through wells. So it's groundwater. Slide 28, the highlights for the water utility, again, is 6%. We talked about hopefully using the American Rescue Plan funds to bring that down, if, if we are able to do that. That is our, our goal. The 19 million in expenditures, which is a roughly $800,000 decrease in total expenditures and transfers. Again, it's, it's just reduced capital expenditures from last year. We'll have a $3 million estimated ending fund balance, 16 million, planned CIP expenditures out of the fund. And a lot of that's for Arwa, for the, the new line coming from the, the Cariza Wilcox, 60 miles east of here. And then our three positions proposed, and then the new equipment. Slide 29, about 82 million for the city share of Arwa debt, and you'll see how that's broken out. The last debt issuance planned is the 10.7 million for this November. And then the three-year plan for water rate increases, again, what the council had recommended to help pay for that Arwa line. And you'll, you know, the council did say several years ago, three, four, even five years ago, we knew this was coming. Hopefully, we can grow into this as, as our community grows, and that's our, that is our plan here through the budget, is that our growth has been able to bring that last 10% increase down. This slide I don't like, and you can see why. This is, yeah, we're skipping the slide altogether. Yeah, we gotta, we gotta own our spots or our warts as well. And our, we know our, our water bill is high compared to our neighboring cities. And again, this has to do with not only our fast growth, but being extremely proactive in our participation with Arwa. So as residents, several years ago, and those of you who've been in Kyle for a while will remember this, the conversation was always around water, always around water. Even when we budgeted, you know, 2015, 16, 17, it was water, water, water. We're, we're not talking about that as much anymore. And the reason why is because we've invested into this plan to bring water from, from the aquifer through Arwa. And that, we knew it would be a heavy lift, and we knew there would be some pain at the pump, you know, especially here through our water rates. Our goal is to bring that down as soon as we can, as quickly as we can. And again, that's why we're looking at some federal sources of money to do so. Again, this being our last year of the, the bond payment to, you know, to Arwa to make this happen. We hope, we can start bringing this down here in the future. But for now, it is, it is high, and we're, we're paying for our future, so.
The other thing to keep in mind is we don't know how other cities are funding their water utility. They may be subsidizing some of their utility operations with tax revenue. We are not. So that may be one of the reasons why we have higher rates as compared to some of the other cities.
And thank you for making that point, Pervez, because you can probably figure out I'm comparing everything to last year. So it was $72.83 was the monthly residential average bill. So pretty significant increase. San Marcos, also a participant in Arwa, Buda, also a participant in Arwa. Buda's went up maybe a dollar. San Marcos went up three, less than three, oh, $3.20 actually. So I think that's a good point, though, you two make, though, how, how that might be funded. It's still a, still a tough slide to look at, especially since now we've jumped Leander from last year. Have the highest on this.
Can we make an attempt to, I know we'll probably put like melon certs in when people get their bill, but can we put some kind of message online, this informing the people when they go to pay their bill of the increase?
Yeah, we've been doing that for a couple of years, but we'll continue to do that through this budget cycle, for sure.
So Scott, the, the 10%, that we deferred in 2020, does that reflect the slide here on 30? Does that go in account with that, Pervez?
Uh, no, sir. Right.
We're still looking at an increase on that deferred payment.
Yeah, and, and as Scott mentioned earlier, if we were to use the American Relief monies, we may be able to defer the 6% as well.
Sounds good. Thank you, Pervez.
Okay, let's talk about something far more appealing, wastewater. Sorry, it's, all right, so another, another jar here. So wastewater service, again, you'll, you'll pay this on your utility bill. The uses of funds on slide, slide 33, you'll see how that is, is broken out. And again, the, the large portions here are the CIP transfers, as well as the debt service. And the debt service is, is our wastewater treatment plant. Here are highlights, no changes in water rates, or wastewater rates. $10 million in expenditures, a $700,000 net increase in expenditures and transfers over last year. 2.5 million ending fund balance, 26.7 million for CIP spending, again, the wastewater treatment plant. One new position being proposed, and some equipment and furniture. Slide 35, the treatment plant expansion project. Ultimately, our ultimate goal is to, I say ultimate, our next goal, our next step is to go to a 9-MGD total plant. This expansion, though, creates a 9-MGD, when I say MGD, it's million gallons a, a day of, of flow, headworks. So basically, we're building the full headworks up front to accommodate that full 9-MGD plant. But we have feeder or train systems that will only accommodate up to what we are permitted to. are permitted to treat. So you'll see right now, we're doing a one and a half million gallon a day treatment train, based on the way we can treat some of the flow with chemicals. We can treat about 6 million gallons a day. To put that into perspective, you know, right now, we're in summer months when flows are high, Tim, properly, Sanford, what are we at from a flow basis right now?
Tim Sanford for the record. Good morning, council, mayor. So currently, we're sitting around 2.6, 2.7 average during rain events. We've seen flows as high recently as upwards of five, between five and six. So we're quickly reaching that, that capacity, I should say.
And so we have to look at those peak flows, because if we're, you know, in a rain event, you know, there's influence infiltration that we're trying to tackle also. But in peak flows, if we are going over the wears, as we say, or if we're taking in too much influence, then we have violations through TCQ that we have to report. So we want to make sure that our ultimate plant expansion takes into account the I and I, as well as just the growth of the city. So we're doing well, actually, to average under three MGD. But you want to talk really quickly about the permit to nine that we're working on?
So sure, we're working with the consultant now to amend our current permit, which is going to be 4.5 post-expansion. What we're hoping for is to achieve a nine million gallons per day permit with TCQ. There's, that's really, I say hope, because it's a target. It's all depending on what TCQ allow, based on stream surveys, knowing that the Plum Creek is impaired. All those things are played into this, through modeling of the creek. So we can't overask for what we can't prove up. So we felt that nine million gallons, seeing that we have a plan in place with the phasing of the construction of the current plant, to achieve that, that it's a, it's something that we feel is achievable. So.
So not to belabor this too much, but it's important from a budgeting standpoint. We have two drainage basins in Kyle. We have the Plum Creek Basin. So basically, when I say basin, it's gravity, or how everything flows into a plant. So the Plum Creek Basin is pretty much everything we have built up to this point. Further south, where we have our south side sewer and lift station, that's not in the Plum Creek Basin, but we've got a big seven MGD lift station to pump it all back into the basin. In the future, all of the development west of like six creeks, the big Nance property, the big McCoy property, now there's, it's entitled for over 20,000 different units, just in those two developments alone. And then if you take the remainder of what we call the Blanco River Basin, that new drainage basin, there's over 40,000 LUEs of wastewater. And LUE stands for Living Unit Equivalent, it's how much one household or one living unit generates. So there's over 40,000 LUEs of flow that are anticipated in that basin. So right now, in the Plum Creek, we're trying to go to nine. But our ultimate build out, as we've modeled, and we're talking well into the future, is about a 22 MGD anticipated flow into the Plum Creek Basin. Okay? So we're, we're at three right now, so we're fine. I'm not trying to scare anybody. But as we go forward, and we talk about the creek being impaired, you know, we're hoping that we get nine, build out at 22. Which means at the, you know, we may have another plant here in this basin, we may have to lift things into another regional plant, especially that Blanco Basin, we're going to have to have another plant for all that flow to go to that plant. And then as technology improves, our consumption of water will decline, right? And we see that. So, you know, it's just things that we're mindful of as we budget out of this fund, looking to the future, you know, going to nine and then expanding the current plant is still just a, one additional step toward many to get control of our wastewater situation.
Does the reclaimed water going to affect, have anything to do with the numbers we have right now? Because I know in the future, we're thinking about using reclaimed water in our parks. Will that affect that?
Yeah. So reclaimed water will have gone through the plant already. So as our flows come into the plant, we'll treat it. And then that treated water, we put into a separate vault, treat it again, and then shoot it back up through the city to storage locations. So unfortunately, it's not going to reduce the amount of flow, wastewater flow.
Well, the exception to that is, it's a discharge permit. So whatever water you divert from the creek, it does not count against that nine MGD. So you could be, in effect, treating 12 MGD at the plant, and only discharging nine to the creek, and the other three could be being re-diverted into reuse projects.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. And so we are working with our engineer right now on the reclaimed utility. We've had a couple of good meetings already. And so that utility, luckily, several years ago, Leon and I really started putting together the reclaimed plan before it was ever designed, because we had all these, these big wastewater lines that we were putting, these interceptors all over the city, and thought, man, if we're laying the interceptor lines north, southeast, west, we need to be laying purple pipe adjacent to it. The ditch is there, it's just the cost of pipe. So we started doing that on several of our big projects. And a lot of our reclaimed utility is already in the ground, thank heaven. So just finishing it out, adding the pipe, additional pipe where we need, and then the pumping capacity is really what we need to do to turn that utility online. Okay, let's move on. Slide 36. Feels much better to look at this slide. We'll just pause here for a minute.
Yeah, please, please notice, Buda.
Should we just take a break of the slide? I mean, never mind. I'm just going to keep moving on. Sorry. All right, let's get into our storm drainage.
It's just the middle, Scott.
I know.
It's not the low end.
I'm happy to be there.
Yeah.
All right, Storm Drainage Utility, sources of funds in the storm drain would be the residential and commercial storm drainage fees. And you'll see how those compare. Commercial pays 41% of that residential, 35. And then transfers in the other 20, basically quarter percent. Okay. Uses of funds, most of that's going out to CIP, and we'll hit that here on Slide 40. So no changes anticipated in the storm drainage fee, 2.7 million in transfers out. We have a half a million dollar increase in those transfers. And then 700,000 estimated ending fund balance, 2.2 million for CIP, quarter of a position, and 30,000 for new equipment. While we're on Slide 40, the CIP for the storm drainage utility, we have several. We'll hit those in the, in the CIP here in just a few minutes as we go through that. Significant increases and decreases in the budget. So we'll just kind of run through some departments here. And I'm not going to go through each of these. You can read on the slides. If you have any questions on these, you can ask. So here's the mayor and council's budget. City manager's office. And some of these will reflect the expenditures we've already The city secretary's office. Communications and special events. Which, by the way, we're moving forward on some of those even pre-October 1, like the Kyle Brand ambassador, we know that we're starting on that immediately.
So on the election services increase of 25,000?
Yes.
Where's that coming from? Just Hays County?
We have a third, what, Jennifer? Go ahead. Jennifer, you want to talk about the $25,000 election services increase?
Okay. Jennifer Holm for the record. Last year, when we had our election in November, we were somewhat blindsided by the invoice that came in well over the estimate that we had received from the county ahead of the election. It seems that there were so many additional locations that the county had elected to use. And they do it based on our voter count. And so we pay our proportion to the whole counting based on how many people participated in the election. And by the time everything came through, the amount that we had budgeted last year was overshot by the one November election. And we had actually budgeted extra funds in case there would be a vacancy or any kind of special election. We had budgeted extra for that. And it just wasn't even enough, anywhere close to being enough to cover it. So I was proposing that we go ahead and put extra in the election line this year because of the amount of fees that are coming through.
So the large part of that, summarizing that it's because of the large voter turnout? You said there was a breakdown of that percentage for the county?
I think it's more that they have elected to open more and more. So when we went to countywide voting, the point was that we would have less voter sites, because you could vote anywhere in the county on any of these elections. If somebody drives to Wimberly, they could vote in the city of Kyle election. So there were supposed to be less. Well, the other part of countywide voting is that wherever you have your least population, wherever you have your most population, the amount of voter sites that you have in that section has to be proportionately, you have to offer half as many in your lesser proportionate locations for voting, like where there's less registered voters or more sparse populate, like, population. And so the more that they added to the highly populated areas, they had to still add more to the less populated areas because of that. And it's just caused, you know, they have to pay for training for the election workers, they have to pay the hourly rate for the poll workers and everything. And by the time all of that went in, they even had overshot their own budget for last November's election. And our proportion of that just was way more than what we had budgeted for.
Did we go through the communications and special events slide?
Nope. Here we are. Go for it. We're on it now.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, what was the position reclassification in that department?
Samantha Armbruster for the record. That is what I'm going to call a right fitting of a position that we have currently. It's at a coordinator position, but when we looked at the job description compared to a manager role, because that staff member oversees their own budget, they oversee the vendor relationships, deal with partners and staffing, it made more sense for that to be classified as a manager position. And this budget line item would make that possible.
That cargo van is for the Channel 10 expenditures. All right. Okay, moving on to community development. So this first line item is, yes, looks really scary. That's a pass-through. So third-party inspection services, that's part of our effort to use our inspectors more on the plan review side and overseeing our third parties. But again, those are, those are pass-through expenses as well as the 50,000 EST 5 inspection expenses. Again, the comp plan, credit card processing fees and charges, that is something that we budget for as expenditures, but those are being paid by the developers and those who are submitting for those services. We do have a pay adjustment there for the planner position as well. Questions on that?
I had a question for Howard, but I don't see him.
Howard's here online. He's.
Oh, he is.
Yes. Go for it.
I'm here.
Well, I was curious just about the workload, because I, you know, the planning department's had a staff of three for a significant number of years, ever since I've been here. And the amount of, you know, interest, developer interest and inquiries and workload has increased probably at just as high of a clip as every other department, or maybe higher. And so I'm just curious if there's a, if there's a thought from the planning department or community development department about increasing their, their ability to, like, are you being able to handle the work currently? Or is that something that you'd be better suited to have additional help?
The workload for, for planning is generally not steady, somewhat circadian, based upon both calendar years and budget years. And when it's heavy, I would say we're overwhelmed. And when it tones down a little bit, I would say that it's at best manageable. That is only for what we would term process planning. Process planning would be the here and now, the applications that come in, the site plan reviews, the staff memos, what's going to a board, what's going to a commission. We have no ability to do anything related to long-range planning. We have very little ability to do anything introspective, to do text amendments or upgrades to what we're working with today. So all those things are on the back burner. We usually keep what we call, you know, just a, just, we call it the omnibus list of changes that we'd like to make, that we always say, when things settle down, we'll get to it. And things have never settled down. Permit volume on the building and the planning side continues to go up steadily. We don't necessarily see a stoppage of that anytime soon. So the rubber band is pretty tight right now.
Yeah, I was thinking about, you know, four or five years ago, we received a lot more, you know, proactive proposed text amendments to various codes and code rewrites. Seems like in the last year or two, those, those proposals have really sort of diminished. And, and I can imagine that that has a lot to do with the fact that there's just not a lot of time to go through and try to really spend the hours that it takes to bring about more updated plans and, and codes, simply from a management standpoint. So your thoughts on that?
I agree. The department is not proactive at all. We have a considerable difficulty in trying to give folks information early on, give folks information ahead of time. So a lot of that is falling on others. If you look at the, the size, the length of agendas for PMZ, and the amount of planning and zoning items that come to the council on their council agendas, we prepare for a meeting every week. We either have a council meeting to prepare for, or a planning and zoning meeting to prepare for. It leaves very little time to get other things accomplished, when you're also trying to do plan reviews and move other applications forward simultaneously.
I'd be interested in, circling back to that, maybe not at, at this exact moment, but at some point along the way, just trying to make sure that, because I know we have a comprehensive plan in the budget, but I don't think that that comprehensive plan is going to solve the problems of the planning department, you know? And if I've learned anything through the years, it's that the folks who we bring in as consultants don't understand our city. Our planning department understands our city in detail. So if there's any group that I would want to be funding to be proactive to help us think about the future and planning, it would be, it'd be Howard's department. So that's just my, my thoughts. You know, the last three years, we've gone through sort of systematically at an administrative level, we increased, starting with the city secretary, increasing her office. Then we went through with communications. We also went through economic development. The planning department was kind of one of the next things on my list. And especially as the, you know, the workload has increased, I would like for them to be able to be more proactive. So, because I don't like asking for planning to do anything, because I know they can't do it. They have no time or ability to do it, other than staff memos. So, just my thoughts on that.
I do not disagree with that. You've got my support on that. May I ask of the council, we're more than halfway through these slides, the 74. Can we take a hard five-minute break? Because I don't want to miss a moment of this discussion.
Yeah.
Are you all open to that?
Hard five. Hard five, though, if that's the way it's going to go. I'm going to hold you to that.
Yeah.
Hard 10?
All right, hard 10. 10:46, we'll, we'll start back.
10:46, we'll, we'll start back. It works so well. Golly! All right, Scott, where are we at? Community development?
Were there other comments on the position or the community development package?
So just real quick on that pay adjustment. So that, is that separate from the 150, the 30?
Yes, sir. Moving along, economic development. So you'll see another reclass here in this budget. And then consultant is 25,000. That is to bring back the Catalyst Commercial contract that we had the first several years. I think we, we reduced that contract in 2018, if I recall. And so this is to now bring them back and refocus their efforts. Questions?
So, about them?
It's 25. Yeah, we...
Right now, we're paying Catalyst Consulting on...
It's listed wrong.
We, we, yeah.
Right now, we're paying them as, as needed on a case-by-case basis, you know? And so we're paying them an hourly fee. And we ended that contract primarily because all of the retail at the time had been filled. And so we didn't have any space to really be paying them to recruit for until these new developments really got up and running. And so now that we have Endeavors, Dry River District, and JLL back active again, and a couple of others that we've had to engage them on, you know, helping us with some very specialized demographic reports and some needs that we've been asked for. And so we're paying, I think it's like $350 an hour. And so they have offered us to re-engage at the same cost that we were at prior. So I figure that's probably a...
We had a mistake in what we sent out, so it was 25, which, we corrected that last night. Right. Yeah, right.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Slide 48. Was that a question?
Oh, yeah, on this, this slide. So the, I know we talked about a little bit earlier, the engineering technician position. So I know we, we've also went third-party with a few things as well, right? Didn't we decide to go out and do some additional engineering services that we would contract out to a third party?
On the larger projects, we do contract out the, the engineering for those. We can do small projects in-house, and we've done that before. For example, we did Kyle Crossing, that rehab that we did there, the wastewater line on Button Creek Interceptor, we, we did that in-house. We're also looking at some possible sidewalk projects in the future that we can do in-house. So we, we do try to do those small projects in-house.
Certainly.
Larger projects, we, that require quite a bit of coordination or staffing, we do farm those out.
Did we add an engineering technician position last year?
Yes, we did. That was intended to help, help Public Works with some of their projects on the rehab.
There we go.
And so we did, we did bring our engineer back from Leander, by the way. And so he's, he, he can handle those types of projects if we do need to do those. But I do have one vacant position, and just this kind of triggers in with the wastewater model update. I think I've said this before to some folks, but I want, when you, when you get these models, they're living creatures. You have to keep feeding them, and we have not been feeding the water model or the waste model over the last several years. The wastewater model, last time we really did any additions to it was in 2017. So it's already fi- like, four or five years old. So the GIS information is there, because we get that from, from our GIS folks, but we need to put that into the model. And all this new development, all these new subdivisions, all these new list stations, all these pumps, that all needs to go in the model. And, and then what we can do with, that one position that I have vacant today, we're actually interviewing for that position. And thanks to James' recommendation, this position that we're going to fill is going to be, that's all they're going to focus on, is on the wa- water model and the wastewater model. So we can keep those things updated, and we don't have to go through this again.
You talking about this one or the one that we approved last year?
The one that we approved last year, I have that filled.
Okay, gotcha, okay. For the, so that's for this one here?
Yes.
And so generally speaking, because I know I hammered on this last year, you gentlemen might remember, increasing engineering so we can get through the projects so Public Works can keep moving. Have we found an uptick in moving a lot better with that? I'm looking both at Harper as well. I put you on the spot, Ben. Is it the workload still, so we still kind of, are we keeping pace on that? Yeah.
We are now available, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, sure. Okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm all for this. I think that is something that we, you know, I talked about it last year, that we, we need to address. If there's anything we can do about that, I'd love to continue to hear about that. I'm in support of these two additions, but obviously at the, the rate too, as, as we're going, our Public Works Department and the expectations we have from our Public Works Department like to see the engineering keep up with that as well.
Councilmember, the, the two key things we really need to get back on track and maintain is that water model and the wastewater model. Public Works depends heavily on us for that information. And today, when they ask me to, to look at the wastewater model or the water model, I just have to look back at them and say, I'm not ready yet. We, we don't have it up to date. We can do some things with it, but it's just, it's, like I said, it's a living creature, you've got to feed it. And we haven't been feeding it over the last few years, so.
So just real quickly on, as we're, since Councilmember Ellison touched on this, on positions that we are needing in engineering, Councilmember Kale and I met with Tech dot, and we were told that we now, because we're over 50,000 residents, we're now responsible for the roadways here. So I was thinking about something we talked about months ago, was maybe adding a traffic engineer. I think that's something that we need to really consider and look at, especially now that we're responsible for a lot of our roadways. And I'm thinking that we don't have that engineer, Tech dot, available to us anymore. So is that something that we could look at here coming up?
Yes, councilmember, that's one of the, the ideas that I've had over the last couple of years, is that we have a need for a traffic engineer. And by traffic engineer, we need somebody to help us with the traffic signals that we're going to be taking over. We also need for them to look at capacities. We get requests for speeding problems, for additional stop signs, we get those requests all the time. And we're trying to do that in our spare time to respond to those, but we need somebody that's proficient at that. And one of the other things that I, I know we, we've lacked in, in our ordinance, when we, new developments come in, we don't require a traffic impact analysis. And we really should require a traffic impact analysis. And right now, if you gave me one of those reports, I can't tell you what it means. All I'm going to do is look at the conclusion and see, what are they recommending? Are they recommending deceleration lanes, accelerations? What are they recommending? That's all I'm going to look at. But the problem with those reports is the engineers can play with them. They can make, change numbers, they can move numbers around, and I don't know if those numbers are good. So that's one of the things that, if we did have a traffic engineer, that's what I would ask them to do, make sure the reports are accurate and they're using good data, and that we could get answers from those reports. But again, it's not in the code right now, it's not required, but we, we're just going so fast. We have got to do something about that.
I, I think this is a very important position we should be looking at. One reason is that I'm getting a lot of feedback from our residents on the speeding, lack of stop signs, and now with Tech dot relinquishing these roadways to us, I think that this is a position we really need to look at as a city and try to fill it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think you make a great point, Councilmember Rizzo. We've, now that we've surpassed that 50,000, the streets, streetlights as well is another thing that we take over the maintenance on, which is not cheap as well. And you make a great point about those traffic impacts. I think, I agree with you, Paul Harley. I think that's something we should strongly consider.
Speaking of the living model, yeah, so wastewater model, and we, we have a water model update as well, don't we? Budget?
Not in the coming year, no.
Okay. One coming up. Where are we doing it right now? The, the water model?
We just updated the water model.
The water? Okay. Yeah, we just did the water this year.
But again, it's about a year, it's been about a year, so once again...
Wastewater.
We haven't been entering the data that we need to.
Right. Okay. Okay, environmental services and trades. So again, a, a new department here at the city. Questions? One, one I'll bring up here is the electrician. We've never had this position at the city before. I'm excited about it as we also take over our traffic signals. But we have all of our pedestrian-scale lighting, you know, all the, the lighting through the city, water tower lighting, for example, or Christmas lights. You know, there's, there's just a lot to do just with lighting, the gateway signs that we've had to outsource. So many other electrical needs, but this is a, a great position that's going to help with our beautification. Facilities, operations, maintenance, slide 50. See, reclass. Some security there, things we've, we've already talked about. Questions? Economic development incentive payments, we've, we've had in the budget year-over-year just depending on the, the payments due. Audit fees have gone up a little bit. Our in-code work order module is, is a new module coming in this year. Insurance increases in our position reclass. Slide 52.
Real, real quick, Scott, I apologize. So going back to the environmental services and trades position or department, very brand-new department that was created. First year, I know Mr. Erp is overseeing that department, first year was spent really evaluating what the need would, and the ask would be for the first year. Could you briefly kind of walk us through how you kind of came to the conclusions that you've had from the evaluation of the first year? Tell us a little bit about that process and why it ended up where it is.
Mayor Council for the record, James Erp, Assistant City Manager. The environmental services and trades is what we ended up naming the beautification division after getting everyone together and that would be working in that department and trying to determine what the long-term view and overall goals and plans of the, of the department would be. And we envisioned, I believe in the presentation that I gave last year, at some point including, encompassing things such as arbers and irrigation, plumbing folks, electrical folks, the electrician, which is in here for, mostly for the streetlights. So environmental services and trades where we ended up. The WLE contract has been key in the level of service that we've been providing this year in the corridors. And, you know, we've been in the growing season for a bit, and I haven't really heard much in the way of, of feedback in, in the sense that y'all don't feel like they're doing a good job. So I, I take that to mean that they are doing a good job. Everything I've seen has been top-notch with them. We have manpower issues, as, as you probably would, would guess. You know, WLE has descended upon our town with it, with their entire force for, for one day. And that has really made a huge difference. So it's the areas that WLE doesn't actually touch. And it's the, like, spraying of herbicide and doing preventative, you know, measures and things along that nature that, you know, our, our folks are, are kind of struggling with, if you will. Chance had originally, this is what you see after the, excuse me. This is what you see after all the requests from the department heads have come in and have been presented to the city manager and the executive staff. And, and we have culled those numbers down to things that can actually fit within our budget parameters. So there were requests for additional manpower to grow the department, but we felt this year, probably the biggest obstacle that we've had in getting this organization up and running is not having a home for it. It's split between Public Works and parks and other places. That's caused any number of just issues, you know, equipment being stored at different locations, so on and so forth, personnel not all reporting to the same place. And as we grow and become more sophisticated, we decided that rather than adding more personnel this year, it made more sense to focus on the facility this year, get them all housed in the same place, and then we can look at continuing to expand the services that, that we're providing. The other key component was, as you can imagine, whenever you pull division managers out of existing divisions or departments, and then you put them together to where they're now working on their own, we also pulled out the support structure that was there, which is why we have the administrative position in there, to help with a lot of the support that would have been occurring had they remained inside of either parks or Public Works. But also just the volume of work that has, has increased because of our continued investment and focus on this particular division. So I would say, Councilmember Ellison, you know, that's a generally broad answer to your question. I, I would say that if we continue down the path and if, and if the council continues to be satisfied with what they're seeing, my expectation is, this quote is for like a prefabbed building, so it should be up and available by, by this time next year. So I would suspect that what you would see is continued investment request in equipment, because we also didn't replace mowers or trucks this year. We focused purely on the facility. So I would suspect in the future, you would see continued reinvestment in the vehicles and the equipment, and then also expansion of manpower as we also expand the types of things that we're doing. I think, Mr. Sellers, you might need to correct me, but I think that there's some CIP improvements through WLE, which will include installation of irrigation in medians and areas that we have never had, or we did have, and then it became derelict, and now we're rebuilding it. So we will need eventually to have the staff on, on hand that are out there constantly working to repair and to, and to install and to, and to upgrade those facilities. So I'll pause there and then allow you to ask any more pointed questions that you or anyone else on the dice may have.
Certainly. No, and I appreciate that, that scope there, because looking at the, as I call it, the kitchen sink meeting, May 1st, where we got everything, you had about 10 items listed there. And I know all the time y'all don't put them in order of your most desired need, but it can't help it, human nature, we look at it that way. The, so I was curious of why the building, and it went up from 371 to the half a million there, why that rose to the top as a need? And you kind of talked through that. And then it didn't, it seems positions, and then all the equipment that came with it, the trucks, the trailers, the mowers, the backhoe, was decided to be left off.
Yeah, you know, it's one of those things where you have limited resources and kind of, not necessarily unlimited wants, but the wants usually far outstrip the resources. So in prioritizing, I'm not saying necessarily that it was purely Chance and Tim's priority, it was also the executive staff's, you know, priority after hearing everything. The reason that the number went up is because the number that was quoted only included the shell and the foundation. It didn't include any of the FF and E or any of the other things. So we added additional dollars into the, into the budget request number to account for the AC and the plumbing and the electrical and the walls and the furniture and those types of things.
Certainly. And then the other question I had, and y'all heard me last, on May 1st, and I was happy to see the HR position go from half an FTE to a full FTE. Are we looking for a part-time position for that?
No, this is split. This is one half of the budget is coming from environmental services and trades, and the other half of the position is coming from facilities. You're only seeing half of it. In my experience, it's very, very, very difficult to hire qualified part-time folks to do office administrative work like this. So usually if it's coming from me, I'm not ever going to recommend a part-time position for that.
Agreed. Which I'd, on that one. Thank you, sir.
I do have a few questions. What is the current staff number for the environmental services?
13, Chance?
13, including me, yes, sir.
Okay, and do we have a location for this building?
So, yes. We have roughly 80 acres out where the wastewater treatment plant is constructed. If you were to go out there right now and look at the construction that's going on when you pull in from Water Leaf, from that entrance, there's a construction trailer immediately to your right, okay? There's, there's a section of about five acres that sits right there that we're envisioning a future city yard. And this would be probably the first of a couple of other buildings that would eventually need to be put out there that are field-oriented type positions. I know Public Works is to a certain degree busting at the seams, so I could see like a shared joint yard, you know, at this location where you have multiple buildings and, you know, eventually kind of circling around the five acres and sharing the same space. So the location is the wastewater treatment plant, but it's not... So the location is the wastewater treatment plant, but it's not going to be in the plant. It's just going to be co-located at the same property.
And you said it's going to be a prefab?
It's a prefab.
Do we have one already picked out?
It's a metal prefab building.
And so when we look at this 500,000, that's taking everything into consideration, all the costs?
Well, for the quotes that were, I didn't actually do the quotes. The quotes that Chance pulled together was from the vendor. And it was supposed to be slab and all the construction costs of the building. And then we added in for AC, plumbing, you know, those types of things.
And that's the discrepancy between the two?
Okay, and then I know that this is a newer department. So I was just wondering if we could get like a small laundry list of jobs that they've completed over the last year, just to...
So the last probably four months, I've been sending a weekly report to the city manager. So I think we can harvest that pretty quickly and easily. It shows, you know, like what they have been working on or what they've been doing. But the fact that you probably can't tell what they've been doing is a good thing, because that means you're not noticing like weeds in the cracks or things looking really poorly. There are more things on our list. Well, I mean, you know...
We walked the downtown, and this is kind of what brings it up. I see WLE out a lot, and there, I think that's a great idea. But we walked the downtown, and that's why I'm saying I just want a list of it, so we can kind of understand.
Yeah, so it depends on what you mean by downtown, but yes, this strip down Center Street is WLE, so...
Well, they were, we went back that way as well, and there were some sidewalks.
Our staff is going to be doing like the main corridors that are not WLE. So like Stagecoach, for example, you know, is on their rotation. There's major roads. We don't usually get into the neighborhoods too terribly much.
Who does those?
The residents.
The residents.
Well, the ones that we walked, we thought for a minute that the sidewalks may have been too small until we realized that the grass was so overgrown on each side, it gave about two inches, and it gave the illusion of a smaller sidewalk.
That type of stuff, just report to us and let us, you know, let us see if it's something that's on our rotation or not.
And we actually, Harper and his team got with Chance, and they're going to be addressing those sidewalks. It's just not knowing, I mean, we've got a lot of sidewalks and roadways in the city. And, you know, the good thing is that we walked that area and we're able to identify that, but we got that out to them as well.
Yeah, generally what happens is we start casting a wide net, right? Which means we're hitting the major thoroughfares and roads. And then as other things get identified, we have to make a decision if it's something that we feel ought to be handled by us or if it's something that ought to be handled by code enforcement or what have you, what the right path is. And then as we identify more things that ought to be us, they just keep getting added to, you know, the rotation list and the list of projects in order to get done.
Just for the record, I'm Chance Peder. I'm the Division Manager for Environmental Services and Trades, Council and Members. Just to elaborate on downtown with what Councilmember Rizzo was saying, we had gone through with WLE a few changes in some of their production managers over our areas. And so that's been a little bit of lack of communication in between them and changeover on what the distance that they're taking care of. So the sidewalks and everything on that end, going through downtown, turning and going down Veterans and things like that are what I'm going through with a new division manager or production manager that will be starting soon. So I will have a meeting with them and drive with them and actually show them what they're responsible for. So that will be handled a little bit differently here in the near future.
And the sidewalk that leads to the front of Kyle Elementary, that will be handled by your team, correct?
The one leading to it, yes, sir.
Yeah.
The areas that WLE are taking care of are going to be the main corridors, the extension roads on the sides. But my team will take care of anything in between. We've also taken on a few projects that are known as no-mow zones here the last few years. And so we've, some of Stagecoach and down towards Stagecoach Crossing, some areas. I know there's, some of you may know of the wedding venue down there. Some areas that myself and my crew leader have been talking about taking over to make it look a little bit better. And also getting in touch with code enforcement on what's going to be taken care of by the residences or those businesses to that extent, so that we can make sure who's taking care of what and make sure that it's taken care of and looking better.
Thank you.
So Chance and his crew are not going to be constructing new sidewalks? They're just going to be maintaining and beautifying? So any new construction will be the street construction crew?
Yeah, I would say the things that are on my list that we haven't got to yet are things like repainting the 35 bridges, the obelisks, you know, the things that are cracking and just need to be, you know, fresh coats of paint or some minor maintenance. That's the types of things that eventually, you know, we would get down to that level of detail. Right now, we're predominantly mowing and spraying and edging. That's what we're predominantly doing. Street sweeping and the street light replacements.
Yeah, that sidewalk down the, going down to Kyle Elementary is just edgy. It's, because it's overgrown.
Exactly in our wheelhouse, so for sure.
Yeah, I never thought about construction. Yeah, definitely. All right, thank you.
I just want to clarify. I wasn't trying to accuse or make assumptions. I like to ask the questions.
I felt very accused.
I just wanted to...
No, you're fine.
I want to give everybody the opportunity. I don't want to make assumptions. So I'd rather just ask and just get it out there. And then I appreciate the explanation, so, and the follow-up if you can, just like a list of projects that they did last year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
James, I might have missed it. Is that metal building the one that we've had, like the shell for?
It's a better answering. No, that we've stored?
That was Parks.
No, that's, that's, that's aside from Mariana.
That building continues to take up great space on the ground.
Now, this is more like a Mueller building, right? Yeah, more like a Mueller building.
It's a separate engineered building out there. It's the company's going to slab, pouring everything for us, turnkey on the building itself.
Well, I wasn't going to bring it up, but to Rick's question, can we please put into this budget, making sure in this fiscal year that the building that we already have paid for that's just laying on the ground gets erected?
Just wait.
This year?
No, not this year. It's in this budget.
It is in this budget?
Yeah, to erect it, the final amounts.
Awesome. And in the Parks one?
Yeah, it's in the Parks budget.
Okay.
Oh, it is? So we actually have plans to do that this year?
Yes, sir.
Great, great news.
Erector, we can get our rector kit down there.
Erector set.
What's that?
Did y'all have anything else for me?
You don't want to know.
Yeah, two years.
Exactly.
Where's Robert been?
Did y'all have anything else for me?
Well, my only, my only thoughts towards the, because I like what you talked about as far as like the obelisks and various other things. It's just, it seems to me that the best use of our money so far as it relates to mowing and rideaway and maintenance has been WLE, because we've been able to make a huge impact, you know. And so, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying we shouldn't be looking to hire plumbers and electricians, because obviously that's outside of WLE's scope. But is it right for us to start saying, well, this is what, this is what WLE is doing? And so let's start expanding, not what WLE is doing, but hiring more, you know, litter abatement technicians and stuff like that.
Those were actually in his request, and the problem is that we don't have anywhere to put them. And having them in with Public Works and in with Parks and over here is just not working very well. So rather than ask council for the double dig on, give us a building and more people, we elected to go with the building and having a place to call their home is the most important. And then next year, we can, we can look at expanding the manpower and leveraging WLE even further by doing litter abatement and whatnot, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Instead of expanding manpower, to expand contract power.
Oh, well, you can do that too. And both of those things, I'm, I'm very, very happy with WLE and the work that they're doing and the commitment that they've made to our community. Whenever they told me, see, I originally thought that they were just going to be here, you know, mowing this section, mowing that section, mowing this other section, when they said, no, we're mobilizing our entire company to come to your community on one day, we're going to knock out the entire thing on all of our contract in one day. I mean, that just blew me away, you know, and they have been doing it. Now, I mean, we've had some hiccups and had to make some adjustments, of course, that's just the way it goes. But generally, overall, you know, they have been delivering very good service. And we used to have a contractor way back when, and the expense became the problem. You know, it became easy to start saying, well, this is getting too expensive. We need to just hire internal crews. But you just can't replace 40 people, you know, the manpower work that happens in a day with 40 people hitting the community all at once and how that feels as a community. It's like if you only cleaned one room of your house every month, is what we were doing. And now we're having someone come in and clean our entire house all in one day. And it just makes a difference. It makes a huge difference.
Yeah, for the price of, you know, it's just, it's a good deal. It's one of the best deals we've got going on from a beautification standpoint. So my thoughts would be, let's, let's do more of that, because it seems to be working.
Just one final question. So I know that the building, we're looking at all the services. Are we looking at maybe a wash bay or something for the mowers?
No, it's not sophisticated. It's literally a metal shell and then whatever we can do with that. So we did not want to go through, you know, a multimillion-dollar building ask for the beautification department. This is functionally just a metal shell. We can finish out on the inside however we like.
Yeah.
But, you know, no, there's nothing fancy or sophisticated about it. It is literally just a place for them to be able to call home and to store equipment and, you know, to be able to have a place where they, that's theirs effectively.
All right, thank you, James.
Yes.
All right, back to slide 50. Is the other half of that position just FYI? Were there questions on this slide before we move forward? Okay, 51. I talked through that. If there are questions, please let us know. 52. We talked through the, the, the new position and then the parity payment. This is for the non-sworn. This is year three of three. There was a comment earlier about the streets, techs, positions and being so underfunded. We have actually changed that in the base pay and the personnel line item this year, rather than put that in parity, right? So we've, we've changed that, that starting wage to what, Sandra, 18? 18 even? For a tech one. So before we were at 1490, you know, we were way, way under. So even though parity had pulled us down, we were, we were losing too many. We cannot fill those positions. So we, we have changed that in the starting wage classification and put that in the budget already. So that's reflected in the base salary budget rather than in the pay parity numbers for this year.
So my question to that is, what did we do for the employees that were already there? Did we increase them to the 18 pay parity, but someone with experience? Did we?
Yes. Yeah, they all changed, and then we account for compression as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say real quickly, last time I kind of harped on this on May 1st. I'm glad to have seen the full position. I think that that is necessary. I just had a question about the pay parity. So we have the 150,000. This is year three of that. So, so for example, there was, in the others, the earlier slide, the pay adjustment for the city, for the planner position. So was that position adjusted for pay parity? And then this, that was an additional, that's 7,200 or whatever it was?
Yeah, that's more of a reclass. So parity and reclasses are just, are different. The reclass for that position, for example, is based on new certification being received.
Gotcha, so that's the reason for the parity.
Change in the actual position classification.
So is that position a part of this third tier? The planner position of the pay parity?
No, it would, it would now be within parity.
Because of the adjustment?
I think that position was already in parity, in, you know, on par for the position itself. And so the reclass again is changing it to a new position. So that person is actually going into a new position with a higher wage, part of parity. And then keep in mind also that when we talk about pay parity, we are talking about ranges. So this is the beginning of the range. So we're really looking at employees that aren't even at the bottom of the range yet from a parity standpoint.
I just want to say, I 100% support any kind of assistant to any major, to any department as support staff. I understand that that's opportunity cost for directors and other managers to get real work done that they need to focus on. So I'm 100%, especially Scott, although he'll never take one, of somebody having somebody else to do the administrative parts.
What's the, what's the total number of non-civil FTEs?
Non-sworn is, I'm going to say 225.
We have a total of 299 positions in the proposed budget. Of that, 56 are sworn.
56, okay. 243, there's non-sworn. Okay. Slide 53, IT budget. So this is the enterprise asset management system for Public Works, Parks, Facilities, and Environmental Services and Trade, and that is through the overall Tyler suite. So it's just adding the next module, and this one again is the asset management system for all those departments. I know Matt's here behind me, direct dude behind me if you have questions on that. And then server replacement upgrades for Wi-Fi capability at all city parks, which I know was a big question by council early on. So that's, that's in there as well. Questions for Matt or IT budget?
Matt, what happened to the days when you had a zero budget ask? I'm just kidding. I think both of these are great. Obviously, I've made it clear about the Wi-Fi in all the parks, but the enterprise asset management system is going to be a huge game changer for the city as well. And so kudos to you on those, those increases.
And council, those who have been here for a while, Dex and Travis in particular, you'll remember that we had centralized IT expenditure for a couple of budgets, and then we ended up decentralizing that back into departments, just because it was much easier to track that way, so. Okay. Slide 54 is the library. So you'll see those pay parity adjustments going to the library and then ebook increase in book collections. So back to your, your pay parity question earlier. Okay, and then don't forget the carpet and the paint is also going toward the library this year. Slide 55, Parks and Rec. Some of those positions, camp is going very well, so that's to increase the demand that we have for summer camp.
The July 4 celebrations, that's for additional things outside of the fireworks, right? Or, tell me about that then.
No, a solid 30-minute show with increased price for the fireworks is a solid $45,000. I currently have $40,000 budgeted. So if we don't one year get the HEB sponsorship, that's to ensure that we can still enter a 30-minute show. So we have $40,000, but this year from HEB, we got $6,500. So we're able to make a solid 30-minute show.
Scott, since we're here on this, I was looking at some of the proposed, team members are looking at. I know there was a proposed Trail Crew Leader, and I don't see it in here, probably didn't make the cut. But what I was thinking is maybe reclassifying one instead of a Parks Crew Leader, maybe a Parks Trail Maintenance Supervisor, I mean Parks and Trail Maintenance Supervisor might be the way to go with that at the same price. And this way it gives Mariana maybe a go-to in between both. I'm kind of thinking that way, supervisor, because now you're overseeing two different departments.
Yeah, but you want to hit that, because we talked about that.
So in my initial budget request, I did ask for a Trails Lead as well as a Parks Lead. Clearly, I didn't make this in my individual budget discussions with my management. You know, of all of my requests, because I did ask for many, the least needed at this actual moment in time was the Trails Lead. But I definitely do need a Trails Lead at some point. It makes sense to have a Parks and Trails Maintenance Supervisor, because it is two different separate divisions. But of the positions I asked for, the Trails Lead at that moment, at this moment in time was my least needed.
So could we change that Parks Crew Leader to a Parks and Trail Maintenance Supervisor? And it's still the same cost, correct? It'd be the same price if we paid for that department?
I actually think that would be a good idea if the... I, I actually think that would be a good idea. If the parks and trails maintenance supervisor saw, oversaw both divisions. I would not want it to be a parks and trails lead. It needs to be a supervisor if we were to do that.
I'd propose that we change that from parks crew leader to a parks and trails maintenance supervisor. Everybody's okay with that?
I had some questions about our, the maintenance of our parks in particular, the baseball, softball, grass type venues, because I've noticed, you know, when I was, you know, five years ago, I, our Greg Clark Park, Water Leaf Park in particular, the sporting events, the sporting part of that was pretty low on a, seemed like on a priority standpoint for the city of Kyle. And it's still seems like it's kind of there. So like those ball fields are pretty rough. And so I'm curious if, if we're, if our plan is, if that's what we just consider, this is just what these parks are. They're just really like C, D grade ball fields, maybe even below that. Or if we're going to be trying to get them much more into the, you know, at least maybe like a B status where they, they, they look good from the road. The, like the parking area at Greg Clark Park is, is just really, it's just not, it's certainly not gold standard. It's, it's far from it. So I'm, I'm not upset. I'm just, I, I would like to know because if it was, if it was up to me, I would be trying to do something very different with those ball fields in particular, in the parking area and the grass around those areas. The way we maintain our fences, fences, chain link fences all have weeds growing up into them as opposed to treating them really well. You know, just, I could go on and on. And I'm just kind of curious what our, what our plans are for that.
Well, first of all, we do want you to go on and on, just not in this meeting. Our, our standard is the gold standard. It's
Not for those ball fields, it's not.
No, it is, but we're not there. We're not anywhere close. But the problem is you talked about some of the things outside of what I'm about to say, which, you know, we're going to keep addressing. But the water is the big thing for these parks. None of these parks are irrigated. So, you know, if we're, I think we spent half a million dollars back in like twenty fifteen, maybe twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, replacing all the sod, getting everything looking good. And then it lasted a year, right? Without irrigating that, that sod, it's, we're going to have the same problem. So in this budget, you'll see that we have irrigation planned for Greg Clark Park. I'm not sure all the other parks that we have irrigation planned in this budget. However, in the reclaimed
Well, it's like the Steeplechase Dog Park, you know, we planted trees without irrigation. So we're out there hand watering, you know, it's just
So we've got the irrigation, the reclaimed utility planning on going to each one of these parks so we can start, you know, irrigating them with reclaimed water. In the meantime, you know, if we lay pipe, so we, we talked to the EST and also Public Works about utilizing their crew to lay pipe, you know, because right now we don't really do that. But irrigation pipe is, is really easy. So I think if we start laying some of that purple pipe, we've had those conversations. And then wait until they're hooked onto the reclaim, we don't have to, we don't have to wait so long, right? Once the reclaimed pipe gets to them. But water's the biggie, you know, everywhere.
Well, okay. Water is a biggie, but a lot of it has to do with the way we maintain. You know, the things, the actual things that we do to, to keep the parks looking level and smooth and everything's where it's supposed to be.
I totally agree. And I've had this discussion with staff. So I currently in the park maintenance division, we have a program coordinator. That program coordinator is really doing the work of a park maintenance technician. And so in my organizational structure and my plan with the team is to pull that program coordinator out and actually lead a ball, a field crew. So they'll maintain, because if you go to Water Leaf, the fields at Water Leaf, I mean, they're almost at that gold standard. They're not comparable to the fields at Greg Clark. And so I, we need all the fields to look at the fields at Water Leaf, if not better than the fields at Water Leaf. And so I want that program coordinator, whether it's with the two seasonals or with the maintenance technicians that we're going to add, their job is going to be ball field maintenance. And that's our plan. So that's what we, and they know, they know that that's what we're going to be doing.
But no, honestly, I mean, I know several of you have walked those parks and have called us out there to look at things. I get emails all the time.
Steeplechase parks, sports, sports fields.
Yeah. We, we're actually appreciative when you do that. So, you know, the, it helps our staff like know where the standard is. So, so keep, keep that up.
I'd just like to say I talked to Mariana when I first got elected and we went through Greg Clark Park. And she made a tremendous amount of updates. And so I want to say thank you for that. But I am totally on board with Travis when I say those fields are terrible. So, and I would eventually like to, to talk to Mariana about maybe a city baseball team because I know our options right now are pretty limited. But yeah, in order to even do that, we need to upgrade those fields. So I, thank you Travis for bringing that up.
Well, that's the, so I don't mean to keep bringing WLE up, but WLE is a great example of budgeting for outcomes. You know exactly what you're going to get with the money that you spend. And so I, when I look at the, the Parks Department's requests for various positions, I don't know what I'm going to get for that. So I, I think to myself, well, why don't we just contract it out? Because at, at that point I can say exactly, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we do that. But, but that's what I'm talking about, budgeting for outcomes. So you, you start with, you start with where you're trying to go. And then you, you have a path to, to make sure that you're, you're getting there. So it would be, it would be great to have a plan for ball field maintenance and, and, and setting up what that outcome needs to be.
You know, several years ago, we actually had the, the gentleman from Teeks from A and M come out and walk the field with us. It's probably time to do that again and put a plan together based on the recommendations. I'm just saying that, you know, because nothing happened from it, right? They, they came out, walked the field, said, yeah, you need to do this, that and the other. And here we are. So.
And I know the fields have been something that we've talked about as residents forever. I know for a while the, the soccer field there was trampled down to dirt, I mean, for a long time. Now it's because of the excess use. I'm glad to see that we're limiting that use now. And it's more for the young people in the area and they're enjoying it. But yeah, I think there's still some improvements we can do there. Some of the fields still are very unlevel, got holes sinking. Just could think about, you know, an accident waiting to happen. So sooner we address that, probably be great.
And I just want to give my vocal support. I, I completely agree with you, Mayor. I think you make a, a great point and we are always striving for the gold standard. And it's not often I'd say this for the mayor to go on and on about something, but I was actually looking forward to him to go on and on about it. But I think you, you probably have some great ideas. I, I'd love to hear more about them. And I think
Well, you know, I like to talk about grass.
Yeah, you do. You do love to talk about grass. But I think that's good direction. And I, I vocally support your ideas on that. I, I agree. We need to step the game up on that. I, I know you all are up to task and I certainly appreciate you all being open to the feedback.
If I can, can I clarify what you mean, Mr. Mayor? Do you want, would you like like WLE to come in and then make it to where we, where we should be? And then just the city maintain it?
I'm not recommending that we, that we contract out our ballpark. Because I know that would devastate our parks crew if we did that. But rather just the, so what did we do with WLE that was great? Is we, because I was asking, I was like drawing pictures on maps. I was saying like, what about this part of the sidewalk? What about this part of the sidewalk? What about this part? You know, like what about the cracks in between? Like it's like that granio, that's the outcome you want. So like with a ball field, it's like, what about the grass and the chain link fence? What about the, you know, the, the edge between the dirt and the grass? What is that supposed to look like? And you can just, you know, what about the grass underneath the, the stands, for example? That, you know, like you, you can just go on and on like, and what you do is you get all that written down and you say, I want all of these things handled within this particular, you know, set of resources. And then you're budgeting for an outcome essentially at that point in time. And it's not the parks' fault that we've never set that standard. But it would probably be beneficial for all so that we're not every time a council member drives by the park sees something and says, I can't stand that grass growing underneath those sta, the stadium or the stands there. I can't stand the way, you know, there's, there's no defined edges around these ball fields. Or the fact that the, the sand in the, in the field has blown into the parking lot. It's just sitting there, you know, with a bunch of, with a bunch of dirt where, you know, asphalt should be. Like if we, if we set exactly what the standard is, then, then we can hold the parks department or whoever accountable for, and then they will, generally speaking, meet that standard. So.
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we allow the parks board to create the first draft of that standard and then we bring it back to council.
Okay.
Gold standard.
And I'm trying out for that baseball team if we do that. As Officer Prude, I got a pretty good arm.
I think we've got a lot of people around here that, that play. So Harper, all right, we get, get a group together. Let's do it. Travis, played all grown up. All right. That was the first page. Okay, now that we're good. That was page fifty-five. Page or slide fifty-six here, police. So you see our parity allotment for the dispatchers. That was just a period this month. And then the, the positions and then the step increase per the civil service agreement. Questions? Oh, that's one page. Page or slide fifty-seven, some equipment. Nine new interceptors and sedans. Those are not nine new vehicles. They are not additions to the fleet. These are replacements. So that was one question that I had early on.
Two are
Two, two are new and then seven are replacements. The LPR license plate reader system, this is something that we had discussed as far as, you know, some fixed mounted as well as some vehicle camera mounted. That really it's, it's good for anything in the state or federal databases that's, that's attached to a license plate. And it quickly dings our, our officers, the computers, and then we can go out. It's typically on warrant, overdue warrants. You know, that's, that's usually by their other things that they, they flag those for.
Yeah, I'd like us to get together, maybe a task force and look at the implementation of these plate readers and see what direction we want to go as a city.
Sure.
Okay, we, we don't have to do it right now, but could we get a list of some of the other things that we could get with that, the LPR system? As far as, I know you said warrants and things, but I'd like to see a, a good list of what other things we can accomplish with that.
Okay. The motor vehicle inspection scales, you've probably noticed we have a lot of heavy trucks going through the city, barreling through the city right now. We want to make that much more of an enforcement action here in Kyle. So down Center Street and some of our other roads. Opal, you know, for example, Stagecoach. So these are portable weights that a truck will drive onto and, and be weighed in that moment with an officer in the field. Saying the, the fines are very heavy if, if they are overweight going through the city.
Just to be clear on the fines, do those go back into the general fine?
They do.
So the police department doesn't see any set percentage of that or?
No, the, the way that we do our fines in basically every fine goes back into just general revenue and then it gets re-appropriated.
I'm, I'm looking for, at, you know, the improvements we're doing on our streets. So making sure everybody's in compliance is key. Not being overweight because that does tear up the street. So I think it's a great way to move forward with. And I, I know that there's people who are taking advantage of us not having the system. So protecting our roadways is, is very important. So I'm really supportive of this.
A lot of pieces of equipment that you can get excited about. I, I'm really excited about that, those portable scales.
Okay, so I have a question. I don't see the canine dog in here. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, canine was not requested in this budget. One thing that we, so you can say canine's going to be a, a annual request every year, you know, wasn't specifically overtly based on all the, the needs of the department right now. Canine is used to supplement for, you know, drug runs through the city or missing persons, et cetera. But there's a cost to do that. Not necessarily a financial cost, there is one, but the cost is, you know, pulling that officer out of patrol. And so, you know, we talk about sworn and patrol officers. Is it better in the patrol or is it better in, in canine? And Chief can talk about that further, I guess.
I mean, in our original thirty-three, actually, we had a big ask at that, at that May meeting when we come to Kitchen State. We have the canine officer in that program. It's just tough to narrow down when we're given, you know, when we have an opportunity to get five or six or seven and prioritize those. It just didn't make this cut of five. But it was in there, just in that original ask. And city manager was right. It's really been in there every year for about the last six years. Council considered it several years ago. And then just other needs have, have been higher, but it's always in that big ask.
It's, it's my understanding that we have an officer who would be able to patrol and have the canine unit. Is that?
We have two officers that have a very extensive background in working with canines. We could certainly do that. Mr. Sellers is talking about the, generally when you do that, you put the dog in the back, you have a kennel and whatnot. But we can half cage that, that backseat and still have them room to arrest somebody and answer calls. It's also a balance of time that, that he's talked about in the past about training the animal, time spent for their well, well care, the well-being and care of the animal. So it kind of takes them away from your typical patrol assignment and they are typically assigned at different hours. They work more in the evenings a lot of times, but they're subject to call.
Well
So it, it would be best if we had a dedicated officer to that position and add them, yes.
The officer that I'm thinking of specifically, I know does not make arrests, like there's just not room in the car to make the arrests. Schuler, he's here.
One, one of our well-trained officers happens to be in the back of the room. Sergeant Schuler has an extensive history at working at a high level, professional level with canines. And then we also have a patrol officer that is a trained canine officer who has experience. So we, I, I don't know whether his interest would, would be there to do that job or not. It certainly may be. And the other officer is the same.
Is there any sort of supplemental grants or scholarships that we could look into?
Yeah, actually there are. There, there are some programs out there that will actually supply a trained dog for free if we go through the military options. Sergeant Schuler may even have some information on that because he's actually researched that program. But there are programs out there to get them for free. And we can get the equipment should we go that direction at a low cost. A lot of agencies will have equipment that they're getting rid of. If they transition from a Chevy Tahoe to say a Ford and that's no longer going to work in their fleet, those agencies will generally donate that or sell it at a low cost to the city. So we can get into the program easily. We can also utilize some programs out there that will allow former military personnel, if it should be one of, one of those, to use their GIBO type training funds to help pay for the courses as well.
Chief, I have a question. Has there been any officers shown in interest in handling the canine? Because I know you've got to have them twenty-four seven and you've got to care for them. And also the expense and the cost for the animal itself.
Yes, sir. Actually, I wouldn't want to speak to Sergeant Schuler because he's been promoted since we've had a real in-depth conversation about this. But both Sergeant Schuler and the officer that I mentioned earlier that has the experience and background, both have an interest in, have expressed an interest in that program. I would imagine if we open that up for consideration to all of the, the sworn patrol officers, the interest would be hot.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's, so explain this a little bit to me as well. So we're, we're, one of the proposed positions was a narcotics position.
Investigations.
In investigations.
Yes, sir.
So I know that's part of having the seat at the table with the county and things like that. Do they?
The city of San Marcos.
Do they have that resource there? By having a seat at that table, would we be able to potentially use that resource? So what I'm getting at is we can't get in this budget. Obviously it's something we planned for. It's part of the public safety center, a room for that. So my anticipation is over, if it can't happen this year, over time, that is the idea. That was one of the goals in putting that in the public safety center. But for the next year at least, would that be an option that we would have resources from San Marcos?
It would, whether or not, regardless of whether we're on the task force or not, we're, we're kind of accustomed to calling other agencies to request their assistance for different things, canine being one of those. The thing that we find most often is that that is, that their canine is maybe not available as often as we would like and that we would utilize. Obviously it goes to where that person's schedule is. And then when we do that, if we're calling them out, that city is subsidizing that overtime cost and all of that for their canine officer to get up at three in the morning and come to work for us for a little while. So their availability, I would say, has dwindled, probably due to workload and funds available from, from the various agencies as a matter of fact.
I, I'd certainly understand. I, I get it's not the ideal situation to do that. But we, we go year by year. We're, we're trying to tackle things year by year. And certainly I, I have no doubt that with the, the vision given by the public safety center and the, the opportunities in that building and having that, the vision is to move towards getting that in there. It's just where, which year do we fit that in? And certainly I've seen it in all four budgets I've been a part of is the original ask. And like you said, some, when you have to make tough cuts and you're only given five positions to, to pick, it just didn't make, make the, the pool. So I appreciate that. It's just like I said, understanding where maybe we could plug something in for the next year, where we could get by for the next year, if, if that's what it takes. And then we, we maybe try and tackle that in next year's budget. That's all the comments I had on that, but real quick, off the top of your head, Chavez, because it was talked about revenue from the, from tickets and fines and things like that, ballpark, how much typically a year are we getting? I can't imagine it's a few hundred thousand dollars.
About five years ago, we were about a million dollars a year in court fines. We're now down to four hundred and seventy thousand. So our projection for next year is four hundred and seventy thousand.
Gotcha, and not to balk at four hundred and seventy thousand, obviously, that
And that includes all types of court fines, speeding, red lights, code compliance.
Gotcha, gotcha. Guess my only point is, is we're not, we're not rolling in the dough from those fines. I know occasionally we get the citizens that come in and tell us, you know, we could go over here and really make some money off, you know, speeding tickets or running stop signs and things like that, but just wanted to put it in perspective that when you're talking about a hundred and seventy-two million, four hundred and seventy of that is just coming from there.
Okay, I'd like to circle back to the canine, because this is something I'd really like to see this year. I'm limited on the time I can serve on this dais, so I'm gonna advocate as much as I can. So my question is, Councilmember Ellison said that he was kind of looking forward to the new center to have this dog housed, but it's my understanding that this dog would be housed with the officer.
That's how it works.
Is that correct? Okay, so really, that's not an issue. Also, according to Chief, he said that as far as budget goes, we can get this dog probably less than twenty, thirty thousand?
Probably for free.
Okay, I'm trying to up it just to be safe, right? I'd rather err on the side of safety, so if we can get it for free, budget's really not an issue either.
I think one thing that was shown, I suggested if we do that, that we add the position, so we'd be just adding one sworn police officer position to that. The reason why I say that is because our patrol division obviously is very short-staffed, and y'all know that, it's part of the thirty-three that we're asking for. So to take one of those officers away from their primary patrol assignment would be a challenge and just put them in a more challenging position. But if we can get the officer to go along with that canine, because that's gonna be their full-time job, they're gonna, that's where, how they need to focus.
So the reason why I like the dog is because the dogs don't see color, they don't see race, they smell. So I think it would kind of cut back on maybe some issues that we could have in the foreseeable future as our population grows. And so we're not, we're not having maybe unnecessary lawsuits or something that could affect the city in a negative way. And I don't see where the harm is to go forward with a canine at this time.
I want to make some comments on this, because me and two other councilmembers visited some real-time operation centers. The license plate reader system is a step towards that, but what we learned in those real-time operation centers is modern-day policing and the changes that are being made. And one of the directions they pointed us in was away from canines, because there are a lot of liabilities that come with the canine units. Dogs bite people. And so they had new solutions for how they could get more surveillance and eyes in the sky and different things like that. And they would hit on it and talk favorably about it, and they weren't saying that canine units weren't valuable. They were saying there was other areas that are becoming more valuable with technology and the growth. And so if we were gonna put resources towards that, like we're trying to put fifty thousand towards the LPRs, I would be in favor of looking at those modernized policing techniques and investing in those with our building as opposed to just going back kind of the old style. And that's based on their opinions and their expertise for those places that we visited.
I think you make a great point, and just, so for me, thank you for bringing that up, I think that's a very valid point. For me, I think, one, you talked about the space, well, I don't know why we allocated square footage in the Public Safety Center if space wasn't necessary, because every inch of that building is important, and we obviously allocated space for a canine unit in that building, so therefore, the idea was that space was needed besides just being at the officer's home. But that's one point. Second point is, I think there are about five other positions that I would advocate for in your proposed budget before I got to that canine officer, that I think are equally, if not more, important to right now and what we kind of need. And I, you know, you and I sat down, Chief, and I appreciated your time kind of going through that. And certainly, everything you asked for would be something to improve the department. There's nothing that you're asking for that is excessive. But I, for me, and with our conversations, there were five other positions outside of the five that we have allocated in this first proposed budget that were even higher expectation than that, right?
Yes, sir, I could have said, so inside the new facility, the area that will have kennels that will both run inside and outside the building, that will also be utilized by our animal control officers in the early years until we get our canine program. And then, so the canine would typically live with the officer at their house, they would have an outdoor kennel a lot of times, but that becomes someone, the dog, who lives with the officers. But they can bring the dog in also and bring it into the PD, say they're gonna do training or they're gonna be in for a long-term report riding, rather than leave that dog in the car potentially running in the parking lot as much as possible. There's gonna be a kennel there that'll be available for the canine officer, so it's a dual purpose, it's animal control and canine. So we needed it for both. And then, you're right, sir, it was very challenging to minimize or to prioritize all of the positions because we have a broad scope of responsibilities at the police department. We are involved in the beautification program and cleaning up the city, so that's code enforcement. We have an animal control responsibility. Both of those divisions are very shorthanded, so to not move them forward this year was a challenge. And then our records staff is very challenged with all of their responsibilities, and there's no way. I hope you can imagine the stress that I went through to give you top five and not to have a patrol officer in there.
Right.
They are overworked and understaffed, and I didn't recommend a single patrol officer in the top five because we have other mandates from Prop F and Charter and whatnot. And we need more patrol officers, we need twenty-five more patrol officers, so it's very challenging. And I want to say they're almost all equally as important, but I had to do a task.
Certainly, yes.
Thank you.
So can I ask you what the budget would be if we'd happened to put a canine in here, what that budget would look like?
I think, I think for about a hundred thousand dollars, and that includes the seventy, a quick estimate with Prevez and his crew, a quick estimate of about seventy-nine thousand, which is salary plus benefits and all the uniforms and whatnot, and then the remaining being the equipment and stuff, because we buy them additional, we buy them different uniforms. A hundred thousand or less.
So are you saying we'd have to hire another officer?
That's what I would recommend is, that you wouldn't have, you might get a current officer that might be the person, but you need to backfill them on patrol because they're shorthanded.
Even if they don't do patrol?
Everybody, I can't imagine. If it were the sergeant, for example, he's a supervisor, has, he has to review reports and all that, he wouldn't be out in the field doing what you want him to do because he's supervising, yeah. I wish he could, because he's great, and he would do a great job at it, but he would have a difficult decision to make if he wanted to be a patrol sergeant or a canine handler, and I'm sure that would be a challenge. But you can't mix the two because he would do neither effectively if you tried to do that.
Chief, real quick, you mentioned our canine, I'm sorry, my canine unit, our animal control. You talked about not adding to that department. I know we're short-staffed right there, and we've passed ordinance on vicious dogs. So I'm just wondering how we're gonna tackle that if we're short-staffed.
What, so what we have proposed in the budget, and there's a couple of different ways to achieve a better work solution for them, but we have proposed a supervisory position that would supervise animal control and code enforcement, and we just temporarily named it Neighborhood Services, we would create a division. Right now, your two code enforcement officers and your two animal control officers independently, all four, report to one sergeant at the PD, so there's not great efficiency and effectiveness there because that sergeant has a broad scope of responsibilities as well. We do think that would reduce some of their office time spent inside their office preparing city ordinances, reports and such for the staff and council, and that would let them be in the field more. They absolutely need another animal control officer two years ago, so they're very busy. And code enforcement's the same way, as we enhance our beautification plan for the city and add their responsibilities. Both need help, we thought the best way to get both divisions the help for this next year would be to add that supervisory position. Now, again, that's lower than the five, it's somewhere else in the numbers, but it's in the numbers.
Yeah, but it reduces some of the administration.
It would, yes, sir.
That they have on them right now.
Well, right now, what we do is we task animal control officers and code enforcement to spend their time, a lot of times, to write ordinances and things that are really not in their typical job description, we expect them to be out in the field performing their duties, but we have them in doing a lot of administrative-type responsibilities, and that's why we thought that position might be the best use of the funds.
Just wondering because I know they're very limited and we have a hard demand.
Yes, sir.
I know the administrative part of it is time-consuming, so I'm glad that we're able to address some of it.
So you have five positions before you that we thought were our best and highest priorities and best use of the funds. The next four, so number six, seven, eight, and nine, those would have been patrol officers, were we able to fund those. And then ten and eleven were a records position that Councilmember Ellison mentioned earlier to help with the, one of the issues we have with our compliance side of our job, and the second one was the one to work with animal control and code enforcement. So that was number ten and eleven.
And I agree that, I believe, for me, patrol would be really high on my list, but I know that we can't have everything. Thinking about the, you know, streets engineer might help alleviate, you know, because that's four positions we're looking at, maybe patrol, but maybe having that streets engineer come on board, maybe for the price of one, would probably help the city as it's growing. So, but I'm not gonna say that we don't need the patrol officer, because I know there's a lot of circumstances that I look at throughout the city that they're speeding, there's a lot of reckless driving, I don't know, pre-pandemic, what it was, everybody being secluded, but I've seen a lot more aggression on our roadways here locally. But I'm thinking maybe now with a street engineer, maybe we can address some of that with stop signs, lights. Our light patterns upset people right now, so maybe that'll help, and then till we can fill those four positions, I'd love to see you in patrol.
The license plate readers.
Yes, sir.
Is that the same license plate readers that was proposed back in twenty sixteen?
So it can be a different company, but same basic principle. It's a device that will capture license plate images, run those in the background against the state and federal databases, and it will alert us to Amber Alert vehicles, stolen vehicles, you name it. Anything that's out there of a concern for public safety, including missing children that are associated with a certain license plate, it will run automatically and alert the officers that are on duty of the presence of that vehicle. And, yes, sir, but it's the same basic principle, there are different companies that are out there now that we could explore.
So at the time, there was some considerable questioning of whether or not it was essentially constitutional for us to be able to just be, whether you're a suspect or not, with, you know, with no, really, with no rhyme or reason, you know, the, our vehicles would be equipped to scan, just scan. If you're driving by, they know who you are kind of thing, and so we turned it down at that time based on privacy reasons.
I think so, I think the
Has something changed, is my question.
Yes, sir, so the courts have concluded that it is obviously permissible to go out and record data that's in a publicly available space, because people are driving up and down the streets now, you can sit out there and write the license plate numbers down. So they've concluded that the capture of that same, same information with technology is okay. A lot of it was concerned about what do you do with that information, how long do you keep it, and how long is it accessible? A lot of agencies now are keeping their data, as we learned from the real-time operation centers that we visited, for about thirty days, because that gives you long enough to be advised of a crime that had been committed, maybe a burglary, it doesn't get discovered for the first two or three days or maybe a week. But you keep that information for about thirty days, and then you get rid of it if it's no longer useful. That was a big component of it.
We don't have to go into it anymore, I get it, I just, I want this council to be aware that that council looked at that and turned it down. So maybe if things would change, we just want to make sure we're making an affirmative decision, and it's not just something that kind of slides through, because we did say no to it.
And as we're looking at the new policing techniques that are out there, this helps alleviate some of the manpower, because you have these license plate readers in your city, you know, throughout your major roadways. So now that's not officers looking for a certain vehicle, because these car readers
Oh, it's powerful.
Ding them and find us, somebody that, you know, just robbed a bank or somebody abducted a child, something like that, it's great. The other thing we need to do, though, if we are gonna move forward, is set up a task force and look at the policies that we're gonna have in place with this. We don't want this to be a tool to hurt people financially. We don't want this to become a tool that, you know, changes people's lives. This is about, you know, policing and taking, you know, bad people off the streets, not hurting those that are just, you know, driving down the street, that could hurt their careers or jobs, you know, placements. So we've got to really look at the policies and see what direction we want to move forward with these card readers as a city.
These other departments that have real-time policing have said that their number-one piece of equipment is the LPR, license plate reader. Number two would be drones, so those are the two, when we talk about policing smarter.
Number three, helicopters.
Fifty-cal anti-tank rounds.
Drones replace the helicopters.
This is about prevention, so the difference between the ROCs and the older way is they are doing a great job of reducing crime through prevention and finding anomalies in all that data. And then they're able to capture people either right away or see bad people come into their town and curb it. And so their crime rates are plummeting as their growth is going up. So that's kind of where we were going with this direction, and that's why, to your point, Councilmember Kale, safe cities, if we're gonna spend the money, we need to spend it in new technology that prevents the crime and look for ways to reduce it that way before it happens. And so that's why I'm just, I'm with you on that, but I just think there's great, better ways to spend our money to reduce crime than to look at the older systems. And that, again, was based on those police officers' expertise in that new technology and the results that they're seeing.
I think my issue with that is that I do feel like this license plate reader is a little bit invasive, and if you could essentially pull someone over even though they haven't technically sped or whatever it may be, whereas if you have the canine and you're utilizing the canine, that person's probably already been pulled over for violating some sort of law, and it's not, I hear you want the preventative, but I just don't feel like that it would be as invasive as having this scanner that reads personal information about everyone, even though they're not doing anything wrong at that moment.
There's definitely a balance.
Longer conversation that we need to have, we need to, you know, this is a, it's its own thing, everybody makes good points.
All right, so we have one more department, and then we're gonna pause, if that's okay, because our lunch has arrived. So let's jump into Public Works, slide fifty-eight. We've talked about the positions, generators I've mentioned, and then the payment, slide fifty-nine. I think I've mentioned about all of this stuff. And slide sixty, so if there are any questions fifty-eight through sixty, please ask away.
No, but I think we should do a working lunch, so take a five-minute, ten-to-ten-minute break to go to the restroom, get your lunch, but we need to all be back here and keep going, because, you know, we just, we have more to do, so.
Okay, let's break.
Y'all good? All right, so twelve fifteen, that's ten minutes to be back.
Okay, all right, slide sixty-one, we have our capital improvements plan, so basically, I'm going to, for the next few slides, just run us through what makes up the bulk of the capital improvement expenditures. And that makes up the whole budget, so thanks all for coming. And there we go. All right, so slide sixty-two, we'll just get right into it, so we're gonna start with some general-funded capital improvements. General fund funded. So we have our street micro-surfacing, annual five-hundred-thousand-dollar payment, street maintenance and rehab. This used to be housed in the street department line item budget, so we've shifted it over to the CIP budget. So this is basically just a accounting location. Sidewalk rehab, we have fifty thousand dollars for sidewalk construction and maintenance. FM one-fifty east sidewalk and other improvements, that is to begin the thirty percent design for what that, what the ultimate costs are gonna be. If Council recalls from the last meeting, we talked about potentially seeking federal assistance for a much larger construction project, as well as working with TechStop for that. One thing I can say is, you go through this, you'll notice that a lot of our dollars this year are being spent on engineering and design, so construction forthcoming, but we want to at least have the design ready to go and then identify the funding sources.
Scott, I know on the one-fifty sidewalk improvements, Commissioner Inglesby is really interested in that.
Great.
If we could send her a report on where we're at right now would be great, thank you.
Yeah, right now, so Leon has a, I guess it's one of our rotation lists. Yeah, right now, so Leon has a, I guess it's one of our rotation lists, or is it? Leon has pizza in his mouth, is what I wanted to say.
Not a problem. We just received a proposal from the consultant yesterday. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but we'll get that to council pretty quickly.
So there you go. So Leon, if you want to keep Jerry mortgaging, you know, just up to speed on our efforts there. Daisy Lane sidewalk improvements, this is a stretch between Kyle Parkway and Seton Parkway. So if you can think of those two roads, it basically just follows the hospital. It builds the sidewalk along that edge of the hospital. They've requested that for years. They've got a pathway that basically takes three legs of the hospital and they were asking the city to complete their walking path around there. Old Post Road is our next bit of funding for the, the construction material. Citywide beautification, that half a million dollars that was mentioned earlier. You know, what, what funds do we have to increase either contractual amounts with WLE or add additional beautification projects? So we've, we basically carved out a budget of half a million dollars a year for beautification initiatives. And, and that's where that's, that's being housed in the CIP.
I think it would probably be good to come up with some kind of plan for that, so that we can see what the priorities are. Because, you know, originally it was zero, then it went to 50 and then 100, I think. So, yes, that's just a big pot of money without any direction, as far as I can tell. And I'm sure we'll all have opinions about how best to spend those dollars.
Got it. Okay. I know, James, we, we have a plan, so we'll refine the plan and bring it forward. All right, our 104 South Burleson project, and then our city square park overhead utility relocation. The traffic control improvements, so 200, you might say that's not enough to do anything. You're right, that's just design for the first one. And then if you'll see in the CIP itself, which you can actually see on the smart sheet right now, we have a half a million. And I think we actually raised that to 750 the last time we met, because we said the average cost of a roundabout or even signals is about 750. But our, our hope is to identify those needed intersections now, begin the design work on them, and then have them for construction in next year's budget. That'll be a conversation we can have as council, in a, in a council meeting here moving forward. But we do have several intersections that we've identified as being candidates. Slide 63. Council chamber security improvements, that's for hardening of the dais behind you. So right now it doesn't have any additional security features. This is to add those. The local government corp acquisitions, that is for strategic property acquisition here in, in the community. Lane addition, IH 35 southbound, so if you can imagine with me, basically from Marketplace south to really the 81. What's that?
Martinez Loop.
Martinez Loops, so basically 81. There's a lot of businesses right along that stretch and a gas station. And you'll notice a little like deer trail made up of tire tracks that's on the grass or, you know, outside of the state right away of vehicles making unsafe traffic maneuvers, as well as just making it very ugly, potholed drainage issues. So this is to identify a cross section that's suitable for the entire I-35 corridor stretch. But then really targeting a plan for that section to create a turn lane predominantly. So at 55 miles an hour, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we went and we paved the shoulder at Marketplace just so cars could have a, a safe way to turn. TechStop has, has come back and said that they agree that should be an actual turn lane. But this, it would be to bring a turn lane all the way down to Martinez Loop. And you're not going to feel like you're going to get rear ended at 55, 65, 70 miles an hour, you know, trying to turn into those businesses. Arts in public places, so this is exciting for me, hopefully for, for council. I know several of you have mentioned this, a first allotment toward public art. Paul and the library team have decided to, or have volunteered, have agreed to take this on as, as a kind of a first year implementation with a plan that will be presented at our next council meeting. But this is the $50,000 from the hotel occupancy tax that will, will fund that seed program. Now we're into storm drainage utility. This first project is by no means designed, there's a lot of questions about it. This is Quail Ridge subdivision. We know that there's some, some storm drainage. We also know that there's some, some wastewater issues there. They're not on wastewater, they're on septic right now. So that, that whole subdivision just needs some design and engineering work. So this is to start on the design phase of that. And we, we already have a firm that's paid Dawson that's out designing that right now for us. So this is to move into the construction phase. I don't believe that's going to be enough. However, the big key for Quail Ridge is the outfall structure. Where all the water right now is going through that neighborhood, it all goes down to a couple of residences and then pools up. So we need to work on getting a better outfall for that neighborhood. Scott, what, was that a question? Okay. Scott and Sledge Street is the next project. Hitching post, park place, neighborhoods, you know, they have historically been one of the first subdivisions to flood in our larger rain events. So this takes the, the plan and implements it through channelization, et cetera, through that area. And then Plum Creek channel improvements. So if you all recall from the storm drainage master plan, the, the recommendation is basically to get the water through the city as quickly as possible. And Plum Creek and its associated branches are the way to do that. So this is to begin the design for a very heavy lift. Now, in speaking with some, some folks in Washington, there is a potential that we can shift that project away from the city into the Army Corps of Engineers, which has, it's a huge mixed bag. You know, the, the funding is there, but there's a lot of federal requirements. But this could be a very, very expensive undertaking for the city of Kyle over the years. Just the Plum Creek is so long and what needs to be done to it is, is very extensive to prevent our flooding, especially with Atlas 14. So we're going to have some conversations with the Fort Worth office and see if they'll take this on as a project. Okay, into the Park Development Fund. So for those watching this, these are monies that come in from developer fees in lieu of parks. Festive lighting in city street and city square park, you've all just recently had that discussion. There it is in the budget. The festive lighting in historic downtown water tower lighting for 175. City Square Park improvements, 1.8 million, $25,000 for playground. And that's, that's a pretty common budgeted expenditure. There's $35,000 for irrigation systems. This is not the Greck Clark Park, but this is just in general, 35 for irrigation. Mariana, which, which park was that? Steeplechase.
Yeah, I think it would be good to come up with some kind of, again, irrigation plan so that we can know what of our parks is irrigated and what's not and how we're trying to, over years, you know.
I don't think anything's irrigated right now in any of our parks, so yes.
Well, see my last statement. Let's get a plan together and let's, let's, let's start working on those things.
Yeah, the, the big part of that plan is the reclaimed master plan, so I think we'll work in tandem for that.
And then just identify the tie-ins, the routes that we want to take, and then getting the right companies out there as well.
You got it. All right. So Mariana's got that two or three times on her list.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely something we need to do.
Can I ask you a question before we move on? It looks like there's $175,000 allocated to the downtown water tower. But I thought we amended our budget for the 2021 to include that. Yeah, and the 200,000. Why is that in this one again?
So you're looking at the spending plan. What council did as a formal action, it amended the current year's budget to provide the funding. Now we're identifying it in the CIP spending plan, so we can incur the expenditures as we go about implementing these two projects.
Yeah, maybe, so when you put something in the CIP, you capitalize it. So just, let's go back to our, our water analogy. So in the general fund, for example, any monies that are not used in a, in a fiscal year, go back to the bottom line, right? So anything you didn't drink that year just goes back in the cup. But it has to be reauthorized to drink. You have to have the council go and say, hey, you need to drink that again next year. Whereas in the CIP, the council doesn't usually do that one time. So they could say in this current fiscal year, we pour the money into the, the cup there, but you can drink it at any point. Because capital projects are sometimes three, four, or five years ongoing where you need those expenditures. And so we don't want to, we don't want to come short of the dollars of a project in year four or five, you know, when a council way back here had approved that project. Like, let's say that the politics change and you're in the middle of a project and the council wants to stop the project. So by capitalizing projects, you put the money in one time and then that money can sit and survive budget over budget over budget until the project is done. And that's what the CIP does.
Are they going to be necessary though on this if we're expending all of this money here?
It's just, that's how the CIP works. So necessary or not, we would not, we wouldn't be able to spend $200,000 for the park improvements before September 30, right? We're saying that even though you authorized it now, what your authorization does only allows us to expend money up to September 30 in this year. This puts it into a separate fund and says, okay, it was authorized this year, we can now spend it in '22, '23, you know, however needed, just while we're getting invoiced.
Scott, real quick. I have just a quick question referencing the storm range. You mentioned about getting with the Fort Worth office on the Plum Creek channel. Would we be able to do the same thing for Quail Ridge and Scott and Sledge as well? Now, is this the money that you're talking about that we might be able to get from that infrastructure plan? That I guess the White House is trying to push?
No, we, so we don't know what's coming through the Biden plan yet. That's going to be released in probably September.
Okay.
And then the, you know, the, the strings, the red tape that goes with that is, is thereafter. So we don't have anything in the budget for that plan. The 12 million-ish that's already been appropriated is for the water tank project on 1626. All these, when I say we're going to go to Army Corps, they look at flood remediation or mitigation. And so, you know, typically has to be really large projects that put a lot of homes in peril. So in our 2015, well, 2017 flooding event, you know, over 200 structures were either damaged or destroyed, you know, through that. So that's, that's what authorizes the, the federal funds to be expended toward that. In Scott and Sledge, you know, we didn't lose structures or anything, we just damaged a few, few homes. You're welcome. I don't know if I explained that well enough, that answer back to you. I did not. Okay.
We can talk about it as long as we can get an opportunity to speak for the next, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, you're, you're setting aside the monies one time for future expenditures, rather than having to set it aside every single year.
So then my question would be, you said if it happens to go like increase, that it's, that we would, we would pay for the increase?
No, it's just in the, in the CIP, it's not if it happens to increase, like more if you have councils that are in the future. So this council has made the decision, this seven member body. If the expenditures continue to come in year over year over year, like some of these projects, then it protects those projects. It allows the projects to, to remain per contract, you know, on those expenditures and outlast individual year appropriations from different councils.
That all makes sense, but this is a one-time expense. That's why I think it's a little confusing.
Well, it depends on when we get the invoice for it. If we get it from, if we get the invoice this year, we'll pay it out of this fiscal year budget.
And therefore $375,000 will be made available in next fiscal year's budget?
No, no.
That's, that's not the way that works. So it's like the, the pool of money gets set aside. It can either be spent this year or next year. If you spend it this year, it's gone for next year. If you don't spend it this year, it's available for next year. But it's always set aside.
I get that. We, we can move on. You can, we can sit down and talk about it later.
All right, slide 64, still on the Park Development Fund. Barton Park, which is the new park along, I guess I'll say between Marketplace and Burleson. Security camera systems there, Ash Pavilion, this is just to finalize the, the plans that we had for that park. Mariana, what are the final plans for that?
Restriping, some floor and roof.
And the roof.
And then the landscape.
And a little bit of resurfacing. And then we also want to have the street crew go out and finish building the road in front of Ash Pavilion to make it two-way through the park instead of just the one way that we have currently. Then just small improvements, Lake Kyle, Steeplechase, Waterleaf. Masonwood is a new park on Masonwood, right behind the mailboxes, behind the Oaks on Go Forth, if you remember that apartment complex. And then minor improvements to Greck Clark Park. Now, there are major improvements to Greck Clark Park, which is coming up here. Plum Creek Trail, Spring Branch section, so that is, that is our state grant funded trail segment construction, right? And we're still not totally there because it hasn't been completely authorized by the state yet. It's been awarded, but all the environmental and everything still has to be cleared through the state to begin work on that project. $50,000, we talk about plans. We, we want to do a comprehensive trail master plan and that's to fund that project. Now moving to Arwa Bond Fund source, water supply system improvements, that is the payment for Arwa, $14 million. Moving fully into the water utility fund now, water line upgrades and replacements, that's a, a standing line that we have each year. That's typically for undersized pipes here in the downtown area, primarily clay, clay pipes, undersized pipe, things like that. Automated metering infrastructure on slide 65, that 2.9 million that the council has talked about. We know that we're, we're continuing to search for some federal funds to increase that project a little bit, but those have not been identified yet. Crosswinds, water system improvements is the increase to the elevated storage tank, I believe. Right, Tim? Sanford?
There's a lot of components to that, so the construction of that facility would increase the, no score would increase the but implemented tools for us to use that would visit the system otherwise and not just crosswind facilities. This is generator, control valves, and some other components that would help us with our dynasty.
Perfect. And there's also an interconnect, I think, there with Go Forth. Okay, Anthem Tank. That, you know, new tanks are going, going up, that's our share for those tanks. The Anthem water line that is to connect basically Pressure Plane 3 is Anthem to Pressure Plane 2, which is down in, in the Plum Creek area. So that, that line will be a line that goes both ways to, to help the Pressure Plane and for backup. Water tank rehab program, that's a standing item in the budget. I think our next tower is the one by Sonic on 150. I'll look to Leon to, to confirm. Okay. Plum Creek Elevated. Water facility rehab is just some, Tim, you want to explain that really quick? $50,000.
50,000 for the water tank rehabilitation or 500,000? Is that your?
The 50 for water facility rehabilitation.
I'm drawing a blank. I apologize. I don't.
Looks like we got $50,000.
All right.
No.
We're gonna get that dog.
That might tie to a project that I'm just.
That can be an email. If you just want to let us know, just figure it out and send it in an email. We can keep going. It's just 50 grand.
Yeah, we'll forward Tim's email to you.
Thank you.
It may be. That was $50,000.
Okay, yeah, sorry. There's more, more for my sake, too. Usually I don't follow this stuff. Okay. Drought contingency planning model, 50,000. We've talked to council about that. FM 1626 Pump Station, there's 8 million in this next year in the 2022 plan. Again, there's, there's more to come, but if I can get the 12 million. The, the rules for that and understand that they apply there, and I think they will, will, will offset that cost. Pressure, pressure reducing valve is what PRV stands for at Marketplace and James Atkins. As we don't blow out a bunch of domestic water lines. Water Impact Fee Study Update. So our impact fees paid for by new development are set by the needs of the system. And every five years or so, you're supposed to update those impact fees. Make sure you're charging the right amount to the developers. I don't believe we have updated ours since 2015. 17, thank you. So it's, we're coming up on our five-year. It's, it's time based on our growth. Just to tell us what the new rates need to be. Yeah. Well, we, we hope.
We don't, we don't.
Yeah. And there's also one for wastewater. Right, yeah, we can. Yes.
What is it, double?
I was like all for it for this meeting. All right, so now, now we're in the wastewater utility. So wastewater line upgrades and replacements is predominantly inflow infiltration, INI. And again, downtown area is the one we focus on because their lines are, are aged. Wastewater improvements, Edwards Drive, it's been in the budget for several years and I, I'm very cognizant of that, but I believe this will be the year. This, it ties into the South Side Sewer Lines. So as soon as that comes online, we ought to be able to do this project. Elliott Branch wastewater interceptor, we're, we're getting. You know, Phase 2 is, is getting close and this is Phase 1. Center Street Village wastewater improvements, basically from. I'm gonna say the, the interstate all the way down Frontage Road, down behind Goodyear and all the way to Sonic's, right? So this is a pretty hefty trunk line.
Starts at 81.
81, yeah, on the other side.
Costs us 81, costs us I-35.
Yeah.
And goes all the way to the Sonic.
I think in our wastewater model, this was one of the highest priority projects, just because of the amount of backup that we have during a flood event. Plum Creek Golf Course Interceptor. And that, that is to take that additional flow, the anticipative flow from our two, our two new large developments up there. Golf Course reclaimed water line. So you see some reclaimed that follows that interceptor. I mentioned that earlier. We, we threw. Started throwing reclaimed water lines along with our interceptor projects, which has been fantastic. North Trails wastewater interceptor up on the northeast side of the city. To alleviate some of the backups we have in that area. Then Indian Paintbrush Lift Station improvements. Wastewater Treatment Plant Interceptor, Phase 1 and Phase 2 Engineering. Quail Ridge wastewater lines, that's gonna help us identify what, what our ultimate. Construction needs to be in that Quail Ridge neighborhood. Waterleaf wastewater interceptor down by the plant. And then wastewater treatment plant expansion, Phase 2 permit of 150,000. And then our impact fee study. You thought 150 was bad on the water side? Well, it's also bad on the wastewater side. So. Why do one when you can double it for twice the price? Right, a twofer? I, I think so, for twice. Okay, now we're in the CO bonds. This is the 2020 CO. Which is the wastewater treatment plant expansion, Phase 1 of 11 million. The GEO bond, so last November, Public Safety Center, 15 million. And again, it's, it's just that year of phasing of the construction, right? It's not the total. The Kyle Regional Sportsplex of 3.5 million. And then Plum Creek Trail System, 500, and Greg Clark Park Improvements, 500. Again, the, the bond itself was, was different. So this is taking portions of that bond for design and engineering and then initiating construction as we are able. That Greg Clark Park improvements, for example, is going to be irrigation and then skate park design. And. Splash pad. Yes. Okay. Moving into our 2021 November bond election. So most of this is going to be design engineering. And just a start of that, we have Center Street Stagecoach. Wendy Hill, BB Marketplace, and then the Streetscape Improvements.
Okay, so I don't understand the 2 million for Center Street Stagecoach because that's the one that we've already engineered and are at 30% design on. And so.
So a million, I think we have an estimate of about a million, Leon, to go to 100% design?
We haven't gotten that proposal yet. They're still working on it, but it's around a million.
But are we expecting that road to be four times as expensive as the other roads from a CIP standpoint? I don't understand why it costs four times what the other roads would cost to design and engineer, taking the 30% that we already have in place just out of the equation.
Those other dollar amounts are just to get to the 30% for those other roads. So like the 500 and BB Marketplace.
Are we using the same engineering firm?
No, no. So we, we had already selected Pape Dawson for Center and Stagecoach, but all the other roads, we had not selected an engineer, which is, they'll fall under the GEC.
So you're. The original 30, I'm sorry. The original 30% was through who?
Was through Pape Dawson.
Okay, so we're just continuing on to 100% using the same firm? Okay, and then for the other ones, we're.
Yeah, so we're hiring the GEC and they will help us select the actual individual project engineers for each of the other roads.
So the difference is, to be clear, the 2 million for Center Street Stagecoach gets us to 100% design.
Yes.
And the other roads is to 30%.
The other roads, we really don't know what the 100% costs are going to be, but yeah, just to get us started.
Okay, and as far as trying to get, yeah, it's crazy. So if you think of a 10%. Goes into soft cost. 2 million is 10% of 20, just FYI. So my question is, like, are we trying to get a cost estimate by August for these projects?
Yes and no.
What's the strategy on that? Or, because none of this is going to be completed by August.
Not even close. Right, so by August, we're going to take our best swag possible with the GEC. So when I say. You know, we have a rough rule of thumb per linear foot or per mile, right, of roadway. We know somewhat the right of way that's available, like Marketplace, that's all going to be dedicated, for example. Others, we're going to have to go and acquire right.
Right, but there, there are companies that we could, that we could hire to help us with that.
That's the GEC contract. So we've got.
What is GEC?
The General Engineering Contract. So we're hiring.
Right, you're talking about the overall.
The overall umbrella firm. They are going to help us with those cost estimates.
So the, the group that's going to give us the numbers for the roads so that we can put it on the ballot.
Yes.
Is also going to be the group that's going to be managing and that we could then point back to the numbers they gave us from the very beginning, all the way through?
Yes.
I like that plan. That's a good plan.
Yep, and then they'll, they'll go out and help find the, the other sub-engineering companies and then hold them to those numbers as best we can.
So I assume we're going to be trying to move that forward pretty fast. We're going to be trying to hire that, that group fast. Is it already out for RFQ?
So, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
We already got the submittals in from, and we received three firms that submitted proposals. So we need to evaluate those firms and decide which firm we're going to go with. So we got those on the 23rd, I believe. So they're ready to review.
23rd. But we have to call, we have to call the question.
August, I want to say 25th. So Leon and I talked about this yesterday. We wanted to bring this up right now. Which council members want to be on that selection panel? We need three.
Right here.
To, to select the, the engineering, to select the general engineering contractor. Wow. Okay. Got that? Okay, so we're, we have our three. We will, this week, we'll be setting up the interviews and getting that, the scoring out to our task force.
Focus on accountability, please. Accountability from day one, so that they, they know that whatever they say, we're going to remember.
All right, Streetscape Improvements was just the full kind of estimate. Pavez, you want to talk about that number?
So the $7.8 million includes $350,000 to get the engineering started. And the other 7.5 is contingent on the bond election. We're setting aside, our preliminary estimate for Streetscape is about $15 million. That includes above-ground utility relocation.
Right, which we think is the big, the bulk of the cost there is to underground all those utilities.
But we won't know that until the engineering is done. So 350,000 of that is funded fully from general fund for engineering.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? For this 2021 November bond election, what is going to be the cost to promote the bond?
So we don't promote. All we do is educate.
To educate the bond. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have, so Samantha, do you want to respond to that?
I'm thinking like a regular person, okay? I'm like a regular resident. And let me tell you something. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
And, and let's address the fact that this is to improve roads. This is not simply to spend money for fun.
This does improve roads.
So, yeah.
I'm a rooster for the record. I'm still looking for that final, but I believe when we approved the Gap Strategies contract, it was about 65. Is what we have contracted for the bond.
We voted that like a couple meetings ago, one, two meetings ago. We voted on, on Gap Strategies.
Okay, thank you.
My, my question here is, I guess, if we decide to go with GEO bond or CO bond, will we still accrue those costs? One reason is, I'm thinking about is what? We need improvements with our roadways. These are much-needed roadways. Do we want to wait and take it to a bond and a vote? Or is this something that the city really needs and we need to address it and go ahead and address it? So. Where does Gap Strategies falls into that?
If, if we were going to go CO bond, we should not hire Gap Strategies.
Agreed.
So, but the, 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 I don't believe that there's a wait, because you said, do we want to wait? Because you're right, it's important. But everything about this budget is, starts immediately. So we're beginning the engineering on these projects before November. So the question is just, do you, do you want to take it to the voters to have them sort of ratify what we're up to? Or would you, would you rather say, you know, not? And the difference is, there's going to be a pretty hefty tax impact. So, you know, the, the plan has been up till this point to take it to the voters, but with a high rate of confidence that this is something they're going to want.
I guess my concern is now if we're going to be ready for the elections in November, because. I don't know, it feels like we're not going to be there. So I'm, I'm wondering if we're going to get there till August and be able to get the information out to the voters that they need to make a conscious decision when, at the booth.
It's gonna be tight.
Or is it going to be a point where we just need these roads and we need to just move forward? So I guess my decision would be probably in August to decide whether we're going to go GEO or CO bond. So definitely something to think about.
I believe it's the second meeting in August.
Because, because these roadways are needed. I mean, the improvements on these roadways are something that the community's been asking for. I get emails and, and phone calls on them. And I know the community needs them. So I know. If, if we took it to the voters, it, it probably would pass. But at the same time is, do the voters want to wait till a following year to pass this if we're not ready for the November bond elections?
And council members, I think you bring up a great point. And I know from the visioning workshop, we talked about GEO and wasn't really much discussion about CO, but I think you make a really valid point about this. Historically, roads, Scott, and you can speak to this as well, have been treated as one that goes to GEO. And we've done. Me and James were talking about this the other day. The wastewater treatment plant expansion has been the only CEO we've done in the last, I don't know how many years. But it is that, that philosophical difference. And I agree with you. What do we hear all the time? What do we get in the survey? Every one of us. It's roads, 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 that infrastructure. And wastewater treatment plant, we, our hands were tied. We needed to do that. There was no waiting for a GEO, no waiting for voters trying to explain that. We knew that was dire. Some people would put the roads right up there with that. And so I, I don't disagree with you. I would be interested in entertaining. The, that potential idea. I agree with, with Mayor Mitchell said, if we do go CEO, then we, we shouldn't hire a strategy because. We don't need to do the whole lot of public outreach because we're just taking, taking the, the ball and saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna bite the bullet and we're going to fix this. But I, I think, I appreciate you bringing it up, and I think it is a worthwhile discussion for this council.
To piggyback off that, I'm 100% on board with that, because I feel like. As a council and as a city, we're going to get blamed either way, right? Like, we're going to get it blamed either for the bond.
That's not right.
Or for the roads.
A hundred million dollar bond is going to be probably proposed as a 20 cent tax hike. So you're, if you go CEO without asking, you're going to raise the tax rate from 52 cents to 72 cents in one year without permission. So just process all of that. It's not just whether we're going to say yes or no, but what GEO allows for us to do is we're going through the process, so there's nothing affected from a timeline standpoint. But it allows, and, and sort of forces us to make sure that the public is aware of what we're doing and they can sign off. So that when we, when it comes time to set that new tax rate and that new budget, it's, it's not, what are you doing? We didn't give you permission to do this.
So then if we don't, if it doesn't pass, then we don't update the roads and then what?
Right, so what are we propositioning the voters? We're saying, look, you are telling us to fix the roads. This is what it will cost. Do you wish us to proceed? And the voters will be the one to say yes or no. But if they say no, what, what are we doing right now? We're engineering the roads that must be built at one time or another. So the engineering itself theoretically, we wouldn't be losing money. It just might be a few more years down the road before we can actually.
And can we wait a few more years, I guess, is my question? And if they, if they say no, and then, are they still, are they going to stop complaining or are they?
Right, but if the voter said no, and then they complained to the council, why isn't Wendy Hill fixed? Why isn't BB Road fixed? Have you seen Stagecoach lately? The response is, you, you said no.
But I mean, we still have to be a responsible city, like just because they say no. Sometimes people don't understand, and I get it. I, I own a home, I'm a taxpayer. So sometimes you don't want that debt, but what they fail to understand is like, it's really for the better of the community. So as leaders, as elected leaders, sometimes we have to make that choice that people are, that's going to make people mad. So are we willing to risk that? Are we willing to risk, you know, holding it off another year or two or five in order to not make people angry? When we know it's something that we need to do?
For a hundred million dollars in roads all at once, I, I would, I would take it to the voters. I really would. I think they'll pass it, too. So.
I, I think it's, you're both making valid points. I, I think there's good and bad for both sides. I really do. And it's, it's a tough decision. Real quick, Pavez, what was the probably tax rate increase on the last CEO we did with the wastewater treatment plant?
That's paid out of wastewater.
Oh, that's right. So therefore it didn't have that impact.
Yeah, no. Roads, so if you want to go there, you know, the roads had a, I think, 7 cent increase for, what was it, about $40 million worth of?
36.
36, which we took out of O and M, 3 cents, you know, and just did a 4 cent increase. So that kind of gives you a rule of thumb. Yeah, the voters approved, you know, up to 20% or 20 cents to go toward paying those, those roads off. So what the mayor's saying is very accurate.
Well, right, so if, if we're starting now, the. So, if, if we're starting now, these roads are between, let's say, three to five years out. So, that's three to five years' worth of growth, increased sales tax revenue, increased property tax revenue. So, by the time you actually get to issuing the debt for the roads themselves, you're probably in a different position. Plus Marketplace is going to go faster than the other ones. Stagecoach is already at 30% design. And so, they don't all get built right at once. So, they, they naturally sort of stagger out year over year, so that in theory, the tax im, impact might not be that bad. But then what you get to do is, you get to tell the public, you authorized this big one, and look, we're actually being able to have growth pay for itself, essentially. But, you know, maybe you could do that either way. So, that might be to your point of the CO is to say, look, let's just go ahead and start designing all these things and just issue the debt as it comes. But I guess it's just a policy decision, you know? I don't want to wait just in order to avoid a tax rate impact, because these roads are needed now. So, the, my thought was always like twice the roads and half the time, like, put everything greenlit from day one, build them all as soon as they're ready. And I think we should take that proposal to the voters, though.
I understand. And I guess, I, I see the benefit from each one. I do see a downside from each one. And I, I guess I was going to ask Pervez, just to clarify, could we do that same type of thing that delay the tax impact similarly what we've done, like with the public safety centers? And other, other debt issuance?
Yes, sir. We certainly can, and we will end up doing that anyway, naturally, because these roads will need time to be designed right away acquisitions, and they're all going to be on different time schedule. So, we will schedule the different tranches.
Twenty cent increase in that first year? That wouldn't, right.
That was the 2013 discussion, I think, as well. So, initially, they were going to do one road per year. That was their idea, because of tax rate impact. And it turned out that that's way too slow, because of engineering and all that stuff. So, regard, like, the GO versus CO question is really a question about whether we want to take it to the voters. But as far as building the roads themselves, what we're doing that's different is we're engineering and greenlighting them all at the same time. That's the fundamental difference, you know? So, and that's really not a GO or CO question. It's a policy question about what we're doing.
Agreement on that part. It's just, I think the discussion more is about, do we leave it to the voters? I'm willing to bet it would be in the 50s personally. Or do we say as a council, we hear you, we've heard you, we've seen in the survey year after year, we're just going to bite the bullet and, and do the deference over, over time? That, that's really the, the crux of the decision we need to make.
It just comes down, it just comes down to let the voter speak, like we've always talked about. Let them have that voice of what we're going to do with the taxpayer money. I understand we're elected officials, and they voted us in to make these hard decisions. But in this situation, like I've always talked about and I've always said, we got to take it to the voters, because they're the ones that are paying the bill at the bottom, at the very end. And we got to let them have their voice, especially something this large.
I respect that.
Yeah, I don't think we're saying not, not let them have a voice. My, I guess, my fear is, if they say no, I know a city right up the street that did the same thing and did not grow the way they should have. And, and, and everybody pays a consequence, whether you live in Austin or you drive in Austin, there's a consequence to their lack of infrastructure that, to update. So, just be aware that if, if, that, if it's a no, that does nobody any good.
Yeah. And I, I totally respect that, Councilmember Devious. I think you're absolutely, you know, I'm, I'm typically in line with that. But like I said, the previous council decided with the wastewater treatment plant, it was necessary, and we didn't, we didn't need to do that. Or we didn't feel that that was the course of action to get the voters' input. We just felt like that was that high of a priority. And I guess it comes down to, do we think that roads, these particular roads, are on that same level of the wastewater treatment plant?
And, and I think that's what discussion is. It's not about, you know, giving anyone a voice or anything. It's, does the city have a need? Is it important to the city because of the growth, because of the traffic, everything that's on there? Are we really doing our due diligence by prolonging or, or maybe even pushing this back later? It's not about, you know, what, what we're doing or not doing. It's about, does the city need it? Do the residents need it? It goes back to public safety. It goes back to a way of life. You know, do we want their commute to be five minutes? Or do we want their commute to be 45 minutes once they hit the city of Kyle? So, we've got to decide as a council which direction we want to go in. But yeah, in no way is this about silencing the voice of the citizens, because we've already heard from them. We do our polls every year, and we've heard from them that they want these improvements. So, we just got to decide what course of action. But it's not about not giving anyone a voice, because everybody has been giving their input, definitely.
Yeah, always the number one priority in the household survey, every year. All right, we are on the downhill slide here. Uptown rounds out the CIP. You'll see the Central Park Culture Trail on Slide 68. We call it Uptown. We now know it's the brick and mortar district, so we probably need to change that for work session three here. But you'll see the other expenditures. And then finally, the relocation of rail siding. The latest is Union Pacific would like the entire project to wait on funding for Phase Two, which is the overpass portion. So, until, they, they say, the two just need to happen from a construction standpoint at the same time. So, we, we wait. Yeah. It, it does make sense. All right. Slide 69, going through our debt position. Slide 70. So, currently, we're at almost $92 million of total outstanding debt. Our payment is about $10 million for annual debt service, which does not include what we, the voters have passed in November. You'll see the annual reduction that we, we worked pretty hard on early on. And of course, you know, we've got plenty of needs. So, that puts us back at our original position. And then the ARWA debt, that 71 million, again, is, is not debt per se, because we're not floating the bond, but we're retiring someone else's debt. So, it does count as part of our debt position.
I just want to say real quick, why, take a pause. Big, I, I love this slide as well, because a lot of people have talked about debt in the city and complained about the debt. And I get it, you know, anytime you hear debt, especially, people think about it in their personal finances and things like that. But look at the clip that we were paying down on that debt balance, to your point, Scott, on the principal, principal balance there, 5 million a year. Until we just had to do something with the wastewater treatment plant. And then we still spent nearly $10 million bringing it down within one year. So, it's your capacity and ability to pay off that debt. It's not necessarily the, the debt. It's what you can do and your capability of paying off that debt. And I think kudos to the finance team and staff on, on that reduction and being responsible with that.
Got it. All right. Flip into Slide 72. These are all the other small glasses of water, if you will. These, we have multiple types of funds in governmental accounting beyond the enterprise and, and just general governmental funds. So, some of these would be considered debt service, some special revenue funds. And I'm not going to go through those, but as you look, you'll see the other areas of the budget that we are also deriving our, our full budget from. All right. Then Slide 73, for anyone who would like to take a deeper dive. You'll see where to get that budget document. And then finally, Slide 74, our next budget work session, number three, is July 31, after we get that certified tax roll. We are done on our side. Are there other questions, comments from the council, things that we need to think about for work session number three? Yes.
I think for me, just the proposed positions I talked about, the allocation of the, instead of just the park maintenance, crew leader, make it a parks, trail maintenance supervisor, so that way we are able to allocate those dollars in, in a responsible way. The traffic engineer is something that I really want to advocate for, especially now that Texas Dye has relinquished a lot of those duties to us as a city. I think it's going to be an important position. I'd really love to see that there. And I think those are the two that I really touched on, because I think those are two key positions that we're lacking.
Okay.
I've got a few comments. First of all, I already emailed Pervez and Scott last night after I spent time going through all these slides. Appreciate, once again, getting them ahead of time. I geeked out on it last night, and I expressed my appreciation for y'all's hard work and the attention to detail, listening to the feedback from the council, all the way from the visioning workshop, to the May 1st meeting. Really great job of listening to council direction and feedback and what our goals and strategies are. And I think by and large, y'all encapsulate a lot of that. So, I just want to give you your public, my public gratitude for that. A few things that I was looking at, I certainly think Councilmember Rizzo's points were, were well taken, and I would like to see that as well. I had, well, one, one thing, let's start at the very top, where we had an hour conversation to public comments about improved place for our seniors. And this is something that I know many on the council have wanted to do something about. It's just kind of trying to figure that out. We've talked about a county cooperation, grant funding, other things like that. I've talked to Larry Umpteen different times about this. You know, obviously, hundreds of thousand dollars, probably between 700 to 900,000 dollars in land value, maybe, over there. So, that's a significant first step. And so, but there are obviously more steps to be taken. And I'd just like to know, obviously, there's nothing proposed in this initial budget. Is there anything that we could look at that would, you know, we talked about design and engineering and things like that? Anything that could be looked at in this upcoming fiscal year budget that we could do to start tackling that issue?
The, the short answer is yes. I think there is. You know, I think his name's Steve Butler, right? The, the architect, Steve. You know, Steve, Steve is an architect. His job is to create conceptual plans, and he's created a good one, right? There's a very large facility that he's designed. That needs to be taken to the next level, right? It, it needs to have a full plan set wrapped around it and turn into actual documents that can be bid for real, so we can have a true cost estimate. So, I think if, you know, we need to take those plans, we need to have the council look at those, make sure that that's something that, at the end of the day, it's going to be a council facility or a city facility. So, if it's not laid out appropriately, you know, if it's just for seniors and you all want to have some more community rooms and things like that, you know, those are conversations we need to have. And then take that to a design firm and finish out that plan set. That's something that could be added to this year's budget. And then we use CBGs or other funding sources in the future for construction.
And I think that's, that's solid. And I think that's the appropriate next step. I agree. And we even mentioned, you know, I think you've said it even in your comments back to them earlier today. I know you've said it to me previously. That would go a long way, too, in making that approach to the county and maybe also getting grant funding. It's a lot of times, you got to have that engineering part of it done, or at least a large part of it. And so, I appreciate that feedback, that, that, that is something concrete that we can definitely tell, tell those folks that came here today, that is something that, that moves the ball.
I, I would recommend, and this is just, this is me, take it or leave it. You know, for something like this, which is going to be a, a heavy lift from the city, that we incorporate not only the county, but also the seniors in that lift. So, if there is design to be had or to be, to be done on Stevens' design, that we, we put a third toward the cost of that. So, let's just say it's $300,000 design cost that we would put in 100,000 into the budget and then go to the county and say, will you put in a third and go to the seniors that we raise a third?
All right, solid. And I, I appreciate that, that, that thought to that, and I appreciate you being ready to answer and respond to them. The other things I wanted to comment on, I know back in April, I had since got an email with the six different categories that we go through on the visioning workshop. And I know he forwarded it to y'all, and I know y'all enjoyed that read, so thank y'all for going through that. But by and large, once again, a lot of what I put in, in my, what I was proposing is my vision and things that I, I think we should tackle as a council. A lot of that has been incorporated, including, and that's why I was so happy when the mayor brought this up, about raising the, the standard on the ballparks and different things like that. That is all a part of that quality of life, beautification, things like that. So, I'll hammer out two other things that I'd want to look at. One, and I'm, I'm seeing Howard's face right now, so I'll go on, I'll, I'll go on the, the comprehensive plan part.
Oh, they cut the feed.
So, there was $155,000.
Oh, got it.
We changed shirts.
$155,000 allocated. I know in the original kitchen sink one, it was 250. Where, where are we at in those numbers? Where do we kind of finalize on that? Because I know even last year, when, or maybe it was two years ago, when we last had funding allocated for a comprehensive plan, I think it was about 150 that we had in there. And we ended up not liking the firm that ultimately was recommended. I was one of those, so I stand by that. And therefore, we didn't spend, spend the dollars. I know there's been comments in the past about, you know, really getting a solid firm, doing it right. I agree with your comments, though, about bulking up the planning department, because they're the ones that really know our city, and I completely agree with that. But how do we land on that 155? Do we feel like, and I'd certainly like your feedback as well, Howard, do we feel like that would really get the tier firm? We're always talking about the gold standard. We want gold standard consultants. We want gold standard contractors. Does that, does that meet that, that expectation?
Howard, you want to jump in on that?
Scott, do you want to take that, or do you want me to take that?
Go ahead, Howard.
I'm still confident that we can get a comprehensive plan for the 150,000, yes.
Yeah, I guess maybe you missed the rest of it. I'm sure we can get a one for 150,000. Heck, we probably get one for 100,000. We could probably get one for 50,000. I'm sure somebody would take that money too. But I'm talking about the, yeah, Scott, we can pay him, he'll do it on the side. But I'm talking about the gold standard of what we're trying to improve and, and get to as a city. And getting a firm, like I, I said, you know, gold standard of consultants, gold standard of contractors, we're trying to be a gold standard here within city staff. Do we feel like that dollar amount gets us there? Are we hanging around the bottom rung and therefore will get the bottom rung of consultants? Be in the same position we were the other time, where we're unhappy with the firm that ultimately comes forward?
So, I mean, there, there's, there's two halves to that, I guess. I can't state that there's an answer empirically that I can give you, whether or not the, the answer is yes or no. You get exactly what you pay for. If you budget $300,000, somebody will do a plan for $300,000. But I think we can get a very quality plan if it's well project managed for $150,000. That was my expectation two years ago, and it's, it's still my expectation now. You, you can spend more and you can get more. The question becomes the efficacy between spending more and how much do you actually need? Understand that the comprehensive plan is just effectively sort of, it's a phase one. I mean, if, if you truly want to be proactive, if you truly want to get in front of development, rather than having to react to it every time somebody comes to town, then you're going to have to continually put together plans like this year on year. The comprehensive plan is the first step, but the comprehensive plan is just going to alert you to what you need to do moving forward. I mean, tell you without question, next year, the community development director will be back in front of you asking for a code rewrite. The code rewrite will go along with the expectations of, of the comprehensive plan moving forward. I think a, a quality code rewrite, the UDO that Buda just had done about three years ago, they paid right around 55 or 60,000 for. So, that's about a third of what our comprehensive plan would be for the city of Kyle. So, those two together put us over 200. Is that it? Nope. That's not even close to it. Kyle is so large now, 35 square miles within our corporate boundaries, but 85 square miles in the ETJ. We're going to need some special area plans. We're going to need plans that address the, the, the neighborhoods that are being talked about down Bunton, which today are not ripe at all for the level of development they're wanting to put forward. Now is the time to put a plan together, as that's going to relate to the rest of Kyle. And it's not just there. It's going out Windy Hill to 2001. It's everything that's on Uptown. It's the entire southwest quadrant of the city on both sides of the river. We have a lot of area now, and we need to look at it. And a one-size plan won't fit all. The comprehensive plan in its generality, yes. We can get a quality plan that will serve us. The comprehensive plan in its generality, yes, we can get a quality plan that will serve us well for the next five years for $150,000, but it's going to continue after that. That, that's been my expectation every time that I brought this forward.
Howard, just one real quick question. So, you talked about the, what is it, the U V C rewrite that BUTA did? They did a complete overhaul of their rewrite. I believe it was Chance Sparks that led that charge. Do, is that what we're looking at for our code? Is a complete rewrite? Or are we just?
Desperately, desperately. The code, the zoning code that we have today, I don't feel it was appropriate for an emergent city. That's, you know, it was 38,000 when I got here. It's over 50 now and who knows where it's going to be five or 10 years from now. BUTA did what's termed a U D O, Unified Development Ordinance. And without going into the details, it basically takes your zoning and your subdivision regulation and mashes them together into a single document. It's a lot easier to follow for most folks that are in the development community. That's the type of thing that Kyle's going to need. The, the zoning ordinance that we have now, I, I don't think is, is necessarily the best one for the city of Kyle. The rate at which it's developing and the, the variability in our development.
Yeah, I, I understand. What I'm, I guess what I'm saying is we're probably going to have to do a complete rewrite because of our growth that we've had. I mean, I, nobody ever saw this coming. So, are we looking at 150 for the complete rewrite? Or are we just doing amendments through it?
No, the $150,000 is for the comprehensive plan and that will be a completely new plan. We are not taking the 2010 plan and amending it. The 2010 plan was appropriate at the time, but the times have changed and we need to do a significant reevaluation of where we are, how we've grown and where we want to be 20 years from now or 25 years from now and start moving in that direction. Once we've been able to establish that, we need a zoning code that lines up with those ideals. And I can tell you that the zoning code that was put in place in 2003 and has had a series of amendments over the past whatever 17, 18 years is also going to need to be addressed just as well. We won't be able to look at the zoning code until the comprehensive plan tells us what direction and which we're moving. So, they're, they're going to be consecutive, $150,000 for a comprehensive plan in calendar year 2022. And immediately on the heels of that will be a rewrite of the zoning and the subdivision regulations for what I expect will be an additional 60 to 65,000.
Sure that we were starting from scratch when we do our comprehensive plan because we've grown tremendously. So, I just wanted to make sure we had a clear direction on which we were going for the 150. Thank you, Howard.
No question. Can't, can't be argued. It will be, it will be a completely new document.
Would it be possible as well, just thinking out loud here, to do, to fund the comprehensive plan and include funding for the code rewrite in the same fiscal year? Could that be accomplished together or is that something that we wouldn't be able to accomplish in the same year? So, that would be not necessary or not effective?
I've, I've never done that before and I have a, I have a really good expectation that the comprehensive plan is going to take a solid 12 to 14 months. I, I wouldn't want to limit or, or place a requirement on the completion of the comprehensive plan so that we can meet the, the budget accountability of a fiscal year. Meaning, I don't want them to have to say, look, comp plan needs to be done no later than June 1 because we need to do an entire code rewrite before, you know, September 30. So, it all needs to be done and put arbitrary deadlines associated with it. I, I would like to have the, the freedom, the ability to, to have the, a comprehensive plan with an appropriate amount of time to get it complete and then as well, then work on the U D O after that. And additionally, that's a pretty big nut to bite in one fiscal year. I would like to be able to stretch that over too, just for the sake of it not having to be such a large number.
Certainly. That's great feedback. I, I appreciate that from your experience. Thank you so much. I think that's all I have on that particular point. So, I'll move on to my next one unless anybody has comp plan. Going once, going twice, sold. All right, next, uh, next one here is, I'll be bringing Samantha in on this. So, I did appreciate you put in the, the Juneteenth holiday, no costs, additional increase to the city. Certainly appreciate that. Certainly have appreciated council's support and staff's tremendous support in helping with the dialogues for peace and progress that now are, are three of them per year. And so, that's gone a strong way. So, now that it being a national holiday, there's been celebrations and different things, BUTA in San Marcos. And I'm bringing Samantha up because she was the liaison, if I'm correct, in San Marcos at one point. No?
No, actually, I was a board member for the Juneteenth Foundation.
Okay, so you're right. Okay, that, that's still relevant experience there. So, I know a large part of that is that, that, that was a nonprofit that was doing a lot of the heavy lifting. And then the city would come in with either in-kind contributions, waiving maintenance fees, waiving security fees, waiving location fees, things like that. So, where I'm ultimately getting at, and I have a Plan A and a Plan B. Plan A is the city hosts a, a Juneteenth festival. And obviously, and I've, I've talked to staff about this, I believe Scott and I have had conversations in the past about this. A large part of that is having a group come in and do a large part of that heavy lifting and then the city fills in the holes, correct?
Are you talking about San Marcos?
Yes.
So, in San Marcos, the, there are, it's a nonprofit organization and there's actually several nonprofit organizations that host the different events for Juneteenth. And you are correct that the city, the city's role is really helping with those in-kind and, and offering reduction in fees. But they really don't play a part, and, and that could have changed since I've left. But they don't play a part in the programming or even promotion of the events.
Certainly. And I think that's a really important point to make. I'm glad we're talking about this publicly because I've been approached by a number of different people about the city doing this. And a lot of people don't realize that it's not necessarily the city of San Marcos that led that or even what's, what happened in, in BUTA this year. It is community groups coming together and doing a lot of that heavy lifting and then the city supplementing in ways typically and with in-kind contributions. And I would like to see between now and the next budget session, if we could, to have some feedback on what cost parameters those look like. Like maybe we could look at San Marcos and BUTA and see what those in-kind contributions amounted to and just get a, get an idea of that and see if that's something ultimately if the council wants to take on or not. My Plan B was, we do have the market days and they run through the summer. And right now, are they themed in any way? And so, my Plan B idea was having the June market days themed as Juneteenth and make it, what, what weekend is it? Is it third weekend, second week, first week? Second weekend. Maybe the June one gets moved closer to the Juneteenth date. And it's still the market days that would regularly happen, but it's themed. And then there's still a group that would come in, a nonprofit or some organization would come in and help facilitate and advise on any activities and things like that. That would, that's the Plan B idea. So, I just wanted to get that out there so council could hear that and get any feedback from staff. Because I'm sure some of y'all have had some experience with these types of things.
I think one of them is themed is the Squeeze Box.
Squeeze Box is the very last one. It's closer to Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, they focus on the accordion music. So, that we, this year it'd be Sunday, September 12.
If we were to do some for 12th, we're already doing some for Squeeze Box. It probably would be a good weekend to do it.
We like that idea.
Michelle and Stacy had mentioned something similar.
Oh, okay. Cool. Awesome.
That's great. Certainly if council has any other thoughts or feedback on that, but I, I appreciate getting that conversation going. The final item I had to talk about was the, drawing a blank on it, the, the consultant for the $300,000 for the, what is it? The lobbyist, yes. Word was escaping me. How do we kind of land on that figure? I know earlier in your conversations when you initially mentioned it and I was going to wait to ask you, you said it was something to do with two firms. Could you kind of fill in some more gaps with that? Tell us where that came from. Tell us about the two firms, why it would be that?
Sure. So, the firms have not been identified. I'll, I'll put that out front. But just in looking at the, the types of lobbying activities that are done for cities and the cost cities pay, you're typically, you know, around the $15,000 mark per month for federal or state lobbying. That's really, you know, we would have a firm identified for the federal sources of funding and then a separate one identified for state sources. So, that's, that's where we, we drew that number from.
So, $15,000 a month, that's $180,000.
Per, yeah, per. So, we're, our, our hope is to, you know, negotiate well and get it to that 300 mark for both. There are two firms. There's a federal firm and then there's a state.
Federal firm and then the state firm.
The, the state firm's going to be a little less, just in our experience.
Because that's what we were looking at, what was it, two, three years ago? It was around $50,000 initially that we were looking at. We were looking at a state firm.
We, we were not. We just threw a number. We threw a plug number. We, we hadn't done our research, basically. So, so now we've done a lot more.
We had, that San Marcos was doing 300,000 back then. We were just trying to find a way to start with something. So, the, the 300,000 really was a benchmark against San Marcos, what their budget was. That's where that came from initially. Yeah, but 50 was not a benchmark. It was just a number. We were trying to find a way to get it in the budget, get it started.
I'm good right now, guys. Thank you, sir.
You don't want to stay around for a while longer?
No, thank you.
Any new business?
No, sir.
Mayor would like to make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you, staff.
Yeah, I sent that email to him yesterday.